Tonight, we will hear from the public on the six Phase Two redistricting plans. As described during the public briefing on October 23rd, the plans center on altering boundaries for schools in Indianapolis, Aronel, Broadneck, Crofton, Sverna Park, South River, and Southern Clusters. As it did in Phase One of the redistricting process, AACPS worked with WXY to examine enrollment patterns across the schools in the clusters. The board is scheduled to vote on adoption of a redistricting plan next month. The adopted plan would go into effect in the 2026-2027 school year. The link to sign up for public comment for tonight opened at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, and closed on Saturday at 12:00 PM. We will begin with virtual speakers and then move on to in-person speakers. Speakers will be allotted two minutes each. We ask that you be respectful of the time limitations so that we do not have to mute people or turn off the microphone in mid-sentence. You may not allocate any portion of your time to others. If you are not present or do not speak up when it is your turn in the order, we will move you to the end of the list of our speakers. We will provide one additional chance for you to speak after we get through all of the remaining speakers. If you are not present at that time, you will not have an opportunity to speak. For the record, please state your name before speaking. Handouts may be given to the board's executive assistant. Those who have missed their opportunity to speak may email their comments to the board's office at boardoffice@AACPS.org. If you provide a testimony on October 27th, you are not eligible to speak tonight. The light in front of me on the dice will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. Ladies and gentlemen, this is very important. It will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. Then a red light will appear and a tone will sound when your time has expired. When the red light appears, that means you should stop talking. We have quite a few speakers this evening and we want everybody to have the opportunity to speak. But ladies and gentlemen, let's respect one another. So when that red light hits, please stop talking. I greatly appreciate your cooperation in that regard. When your name is called, I will be calling up the first five speakers. When we have in-person, please come forward. You may choose to speak from the podium or from the witness tables, whichever you prefer. And so, we're going to begin this evening with our virtual testimony. The first person this evening is Jessica Hunt.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Hunt and I'm a South County parent of a Bates-Apec student. I'm here to speak about the proposal to move part of the Apex Arts Program from Annapolis High School to Severn Run. Let me be clear, this program should not move. It should not even be under consideration for movement. This fall, it took until the second quarter and an article in the Capital Gazette for South County and Edgewater Apex students to finally have a bus arrive early enough to get to Bates on time. Parents created a shared spreadsheet to coordinate driving so students could get to school before the light bell. For an entire quarter, we did not know if the bus would arrive 5, 15, or 30 minutes late. That is the reality within the current, much closer Annapolis feeder system. Now we're being told students can reliably be transported twice the distance, U-Route 2, onto 50, and then 97. When the system has not demonstrated, it can manage half that distance. Not this year and not in previous years at the middle school level. Communication from transportation has been almost non-existent. For weeks, the only response we received was, "We are working on solutions." Yet no solutions were communicated. When we raised this to the board members representing Annapolis and South County, we were told, quote, "Transportation is not in their purview. That cannot be the position of a public school system. Transportation is how students access public education, and in this case, a county-promised magnet program. If students cannot get to school before the light bell, the system is failing its obligation to them. I do want to thank board member Eric McBarland for reaching out independently and offering genuine support. Her responsiveness matters. A community petition is also calling for Phase Two redistricting to pause due to data discrepancies, lack of transparency, and planning standards not being met. Concerns that absolutely extend to transportation capacity. We should not dismantle a program that works. We should not destabilize students or stretch an already strained transportation resource. Already strained transportation resources, excuse me. And we should not relocate Apex when the basic requirement of getting students to school on time is not being met at lower levels. For all of these reasons, I respectfully urge the board to keep Apex Arts in the Annapolis and Broadneck feeders permanently.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired. Number two, Frank Thorpe. Frank Thorpe. Okay, not seeing Frank Thorpe. Our next speaker is Jillian Rosato.
Hi all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Jillian Rosato, mom to three little girls who live in Reva and attend Davidsonville Elementary School. Since the initial scenarios were announced, I've had the privilege of communicating with the board and staff, and I thank you all for that. You know this two-minute limit is going to be hard for me. You've patiently listened to the concerns of my community, and I felt my advocacy was heard and considered. However, when the surgical recommendations came out, I was disappointed to see a move toward the privatization of Davidsonville Elementary School, and not one, but in both of the superintendent's recommendations. In good faith, parents respectfully requested access to the data that led to the surgical removal of students living in data from their current school. To date, the community has not received concrete data as to why an attendance island was extended rather than following the naturally occurring boundary lines. Trust in the process erodes when no facts that can support decision-making are shared. How can parents feel confident about such a surgical move without the data to support the decision? Especially when the school they're being removed from remains at or over 100% utilization. Reva as a community has been described as kicking and screaming by this Board of Education during prior redistricting processes. This description, paired with AACPS's stated desire to maintain Davidsonville's boundaries, makes this process appear personal rather than grounded in data. AACPS's lack of response to families with data-driven rationale leaves parents wondering if bias rather than concrete data led to this decision. I urge this board to consider how Davidsonville Elementary School students living in Reva were selected to change schools in both recommendations after not shifting during unbiased scenarios. The timing of public hearings and board voting shines a light on the fact that their input is not valued at this point during redistricting processes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening. I hope you have a great night.
Our next speaker is Lanell Cassell.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lanell Kessel. I come to you as a parent of children who've attended Aronel High School and Middle School and a current parent of rising fourth and fifth grade students at Piney Orchard Elementary. This evening, myself and Piney parents would like to discuss the future of our schools. I urge you to consider the profound impact of your decisions regarding redistricting on our communities. Today, I ask you to vote on board recommendations, and as you do, I encourage you to prioritize the well-being and unity of our neighborhoods. Our community encourages you to refrain from drawing arbitrary lines that sever ties and disrupt the fabric of our neighborhoods. The Piney Orchard community is here to ask that you all vote for the board recommendations to keep Piney and other communities intact. I ask that we harness the power of data-driven decisions, common sense, and keeping neighborhoods together to guide redistricting efforts. By doing so, we can ensure that our schools serve as beacons of community cohesion rather than barriers that divide. To mitigate the impact of changes, let's explore innovative solutions which can provide temporary relief to keep communities intact. Dr. Vadel and board members, by working together and prioritizing community unity, we can create a brighter future for our children and our neighborhoods. Let's make decisions that reflect our shared values and commitment to excellence. Vote on board recommendations and let's build a stronger community together, one school at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Inez Yoder.
Good morning, board members. My name is Inez Yoder and I'm here to express concern about the proposal with redistricting that would move 28 Watch Apple Elementary students, including my own, to Odenton Elementary. I'm a father of three little girls. I moved to this neighborhood in hopes of giving them bright and secure future. To some, it's just elementary school, but to me, it means a lot more. I love Watch Apple Elementary, not just for the education, but the acceptance and commitment to diversify the life and people. I know redistricting must happen, but these small numbers of kids won't affect any future feeder parents if they stay at Watch Apple. Staying will actually prevent the school from having lower enrollment numbers. This is the data that came in from Dr. Vadel. So our neighborhood's Watch Apple was between Piney Orchard Parkway and Watch Apple Road. Of the old Watch Apple, the closed net community, like we all know each other. Relocating our children would hurt strong friendships, which they play on our streets right now, and also trust the teacher relationships that have supported their growth. I respectfully ask the board to remove Watch Apple Elementary from the redistricting plan and allow these 28 students to remain in the school community where they are safe, supported, and thriving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Priscilla Austin. Great smile. Okay, no Priscilla. All right, moving on. Keisha Deutsch.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Keisha Deutsch. My husband and I live in the Crofton Cluster and have two children, a fifth and a seventh grader. I've been in education for nearly 25 years. Helping children grow and succeed isn't just my profession, it's my ministry. Thank you, board members, especially Mrs. McDermott, for your time, thoughtfulness, and dedication throughout this process. I know this work isn't easy. I'm here to ask that you support board member McDermott's recommendation and keep the Crofton community together. Crofton is a strong, connected community where our students grow and thrive alongside their peers from kindergarten through high school. Under Dr. Vadel's proposal, my neighborhood would be rezoned for a Rundle Middle and High, separating children from the friends and support systems they felt. Our daughter, who started kindergarten during the pandemic, finally found her people and now faces losing them again. At the Crofton Coral Connection field trip, students said, "What's the point? I don't even, I won't even be here next year." Children are already mourning a community they haven't yet left. Our son attends a magnet program and often asks to return to Crofton because he misses his community. That was our choice, but I can't imagine families being forced into that separation. How harmful will that be, year after year, for students who simply want to belong? We value diversity in fear that split articulation will lessen the kaleidoscope that makes Crofton so special. Our son's magnet school is not as diverse. He adds to the diversity. We chose it for the program in hope that he learned from others, and they for him, about navigating a world that isn't monochromatic. That's the real world. But it's not a choice we would make again. The only reason he remains there is because we're teaching our children that when you start something, you finish it. He still wants to come back to Crofton. Please do not split-articulate Nantucket Elementary. This plan may look like numbers on a chart, but it's our children's lives in practice. If we truly believe and grow belongs and succeed, then your decisions must reflect it. Keep Crofton whole, keep our children connected, keep Crofton together.
Your time has expired.
Thank you all so much for your time and for the important work you continue to do.
Our next speaker is Christian Lynch. Christian, good evening.
Sorry, it's just my camera.
No problem. We can see you.
All right. All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Christian Lynch and I am a freshman student at Crofton High School. I live in the Nantucket Cluster and I play lacrosse. If the board were to adopt the super intense proposal, my sister and I would be split from the people we have grown with, become friends, and teammates will now become rivals. From my understanding, in 2018, during the last redistricting process, Route 3 was considered the dividing line between those students who would attend Crofton High versus Aronel High. I realized that things changed. However, students living in the Nantucket Cluster would be severely impacted by traffic on Route 3, which is very congested in the morning and afternoons. Students would no longer have the option to ride their bikes to school, and it would be incredibly difficult for me, my sister, and our peers to adjust to a new environment. I ask that you consider safety and overall well-being and not destroy the relationships and communities that have been built over the years. There is no secret as to how divided our nation is at this time. Do you ask the board want to contribute to that divide? Or will you do the honorable thing and uphold the prior decision made by the board and let Route 3 continue to be the boundary line? If you truly want to make Enrona County great, vote for the community and consider the impact to the students. I value both my community and friends, and I hope that you will do the same and keep our communities together. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Srinath Gupta. Our next speaker is Sonal Gupta. Sonal Gupta.
Good evening, board members and everyone present. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sonal Gupta, and I'm a parent of 7th grader at Crofton Middle School. I'm testifying in support of Ms. McDermott amendments, which removed the split articulation of Nantucket Elementary. The students from Nantucket Elementary have built friendships, participated in school activities where they get to interact with Crofton Middle students and counselors, and developed a strong sense of belonging in Crofton. To applaud them at such critical transition point, it's not just a logistical change, it's an emotional one. If a split articulation happens, the small groups sent to Arundel Cluster won't get the same sense of belonging or familiarity as every other student in Crofton. They'll start middle school already feeling left out and disconnected. My family experienced something similar firsthand last year. When our family moved to Crofton from another community due to a medical crisis that we faced, my daughter started 6th grade at Crofton Middle and had a hard time adjusting without familiar faces in the class. She often came home saying she did not know anyone and that everyone had something in common. Their elementary school, their teachers, swim clubs, dance clubs, and their shared memory. Every day, it was a challenge to send her to the school, knowing she felt like an outsider. If this split happens, a small group of children will face this struggle every single year. Additionally, when my family faced the medical crisis, during that time, we saw how important a strong supportive community is. A crisis can happen to any time, to any of us, and having a strong sense of community can make all the difference for a family. If you split articulate Nantucket, you'll be removing the safety net from a small group of students. I sincerely urge you to keep our students together, keep our children together where they belong. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Ryan Cleckley.
Hey, good evening, the board. Dr. Bedell, my name is Ryan Cleckley. I'm a relatively new parent living down in the Deal School District off of Chalk Point Road. And like many of the other fantastic speeches tonight, testifying in support of my daughter and starting her new venture in the school system. My daughter Sophia is attending Deal currently. We're one of very small families that's affected by the Chalk Point Road change. The Chalk Point Road change, it sounds like in reading through, is supported by the board to stay as put. However, believe Dr. Bedell's plan slightly differs. I moved 19 times as a kid in my life. I came here to Maryland in my freshman year of high school, and it was very difficult getting adjusted. And one of the reasons we moved here recently and bought a home in this area is because I wanted my daughter to be planted and start her elementary school in an area that she could be, you know, situated with stable friend group. I understand that the decision that you guys have to make is difficult. As a supervisor and a leader at my department, I understand sometimes we're tasked with making decisions which negatively affect people and families. However, I would urge you to reconsider leaving Chalk Point Road as is based on the board's recommendations, Dr. Bedell, and just stay with the current plan. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lauren Thomas.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lauren Thomas, and I am the parent of a 3rd grader at Two Rivers Elementary. I'm also a local realtor, so I spend a lot of time talking with families about how important stability and school community is for children. My son has already gone through two school changes in the past four years because of previous redistricting. If this proposal moves forward, this will be his third move before he even finishes elementary school. At this age, that's a lot. He's finally settled. He knows his teachers, he has friends he feels safe with, and he's comfortable here. He was also on an IEP just for stuttering, and he finally graduated thanks to Two Rivers. That sense of comfort took time to build. Two Rivers also works for our family in a very real, everyday way. He attends SAC, and the proximity to our home makes pickup, drop-off, and participation in his school community possible. The proposed schools are much further away and would make before and aftercare extremely difficult. I know we are not the only family who relies on that support. As a local realtor, I see how much families try to avoid multiple school transitions, not because change is bad, but because once a child finds their footing socially and emotionally, that stability becomes part of how they learn. Relationships matter, familiarity matters, and feeling like you belong somewhere matters. I completely understand the need to balance enrollment. I see the growth in this area every day. But I'm asking that we also look at the human side, specifically for the kids who have already been moved once or twice. Repeating that disruption has real effects. I'm asking the board to consider continuity for those students who have already experienced school transitions due to redistricting. They've adjusted, they've done their part, and they deserve the chance to stay where they are finally rooted. Thank you for listening, and thank you for considering the real impact these decisions have on real children and real families.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Smith.
Hi, I'm Kevin Smith. I'm a parent of three children in the Annapolis Cluster. I urge you to vote to keep the Apex Arts Magnet Program at Annapolis High School. As a parent of a current student, I've seen firsthand how Apex strengthens the school's reputation, draws engaged families, and enriches the overall community. Apex students and parents make up a large portion of the most active members of the PTSA, sports boosters, and broader school community. Losing them would reduce engagement and momentum at Annapolis High School. Relocating the Apex Arts Program creates unnecessary logistical issues. Annapolis High School has the best access to the wonderful Studio 39. Moving the program would reduce instructional time for students and make participation in after-school activities unnecessarily difficult. The IB Magnet Program would also be negatively impacted by the moving of Apex Program out of Annapolis High School due to the shared transportation resources. Additionally, moving the program would mean a loss of experienced Apex teachers, valuable resources, and vital funding for AHS. Breaking up the existing Bates-Annapolis cohort, Bates Middle and Annapolis High School cohort, would further weaken community connections, and that helps students to thrive. Annapolis High School has provided my child an outstanding education and sense of belonging. Please preserve this opportunity for current and future students by keeping the Apex Arts Program at Annapolis High School. Thank you.
Thank you. So that does conclude our virtual testimony. Before we conclude, I want to go back. Frank Thorp? Not available. Priscilla Austin? Not available. Okay. So that does conclude our virtual testimony this evening. We'll move on to our in-person testimony. I will be calling up five people at a time. The first five will be Mireya Castro, Kate Wan, Amanda Fisher, Laura Glisten, and Hannah Kim.
Good evening, everyone. I speak in my language this night because I feel comfortable. Mi nombre es Mireya Castro y soy la vicepresidenta hispana de la asociación de padres de la escuela primaria Eastport Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mireya Castro, and I am the Spanish-speaking vice president of the PTA Association at Eastport Elementary School.
Me opongo al cambio de límites de Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsborough.
I'm opposed to the change in boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsborough Elementary.
He formado parte de la comunidad escolar de Eastport durante muchos años. Mi familia conoce a los maestros, al personal, y a las familias. Ayudo a mucho de mis vecinos, padres que hablan principalmente español. A comprender los formularios escolares, a comunicarse con los maestros, y a encontrar los recursos que sus hijos necesitan para tener éxito.
I have become part of the community, of the school community at Eastport during many years. My family knows all the teachers, the staff, and other families. I help a lot of my neighbors, parents who speak primarily Spanish, to understand the form, the school forms, to communicate with their teachers, and to find the resources that their children need to be successful.
Según este plan, mi familia se mudaría Georgetown East, pero muchas de las familias a las que ayuda permanecerían en Eastport. Las personas que dependen de mi ayuda estarían en una escuela y mi familia en otra.
According to this plan, my family would be moved to Georgetown East, but a lot of the families that I help would remain at Eastport. The people that depend on my help will be in one school, and I will be in another.
En cambio, dificultará aún más que los padres hispanohablantes se desenvuelvan en un sistema que ya es complejo y a veces confuso. Pondrá una población ya vulnerable en una situación aún más vulnerable y hará que la promesa de las escuelas públicas sea más difícil de alcanzar.
This change will make even more difficult for Spanish-speaking parents to develop in a system that is already complex and sometimes confusing. It would put an already vulnerable population in a difficult situation and even more vulnerable, and will make the promise of public education even more difficult to reach.
Pida la junta que rechace todos los cambios de límite, proteja los vínculos que ayudan a cada familia sin importar el idioma que se hable a sentirse parte de la comunidad escolar.
I ask the Board of Education to refuse all of the changes and limits and protect the already vulnerable families, and without concern to language. And I hope that we can remain feeling part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Yin, and I'm the communications chair at Eastport Elementary School PTA. Last week, there was a lot of compelling testimony about how redistricting would impact families personally. We heard some of that today, and we'll continue to hear that. But I'm here to tell you how redistricting will impact Eastport Elementary School as a school itself. Eastport is a small school. We only have 280 students enrolled, and that's an already healthy amount. If 32 of the students are moved, that will be over 10% of our student body. That would not only move students, but it would strip away valuable resources from our already small but mighty PTA. If this happens, we will lose not only families, but our leaders. We will lose many PTA members, our PTA treasurer, our volunteer basketball coach, our volunteer soccer coach, and we will also lose our Spanish liaison. These are the people that drive our fundraisers, build relationships, and connect families. This is a commitment that is not transferable to another community outside of their own. This loss would be a real gap in parent participation, volunteerism, and fundraising. That supports families, students, and teachers alike. I ask you to please not strip away the passion and people that make Eastport strong. We are on a path to obtaining four stars, and we have a goal of reaching five stars. And we want to finish that journey as a community. Please vote against the amendment impacting Annapolis Cluster and Eastport Elementary School. Thank you.
Amanda Fisher.
Hi, I'm Amanda Fisher, proud Riva resident and parent to two AACPS students. I urge the board to pause this process because it fails your own standards of fairness, transparency, and logic. You've stated boundaries should be logical as far as contiguous, yet Glen Isle is being surgically removed from Davidsonville, a school we've been part of since 1961. While more contiguous communities go untouched, that's not logic, it's convenience. We've asked why more contiguous communities closer to Central aren't also considered at this time. The answer, we can't do that to them. That's not equity, that's favoritism. And when boundary decisions reflect ZIP Code privilege instead of public school principles, it starts to resemble the privatization of public schools. Staff have publicly cited conserving Davidsonville boundaries as a guiding variable, but it's not in your criteria. It's ZIP Code preference masquerading as policy. In Phase 1, you eliminated attendance island as part of your stated goal to make districts more logical as far as contiguous. Phase 2, you've expanded them. Dr. Heiser has been clear that many communities were removed from consideration because they provided feedback. Reminder that Glen Isle wasn't included in scenarios 1 through 3. When suddenly added in R1 and R2, we were told by multiple board members not to get loud and to use the portal. We did, but our comments were never acknowledged, and the public summary stopped. Other communities were protected because they had early access and alternative options for you to consider. We've been denied both. As a surgically removed sliver, our ability to influence this process was structurally impossible from the start. When you openly align with advocacy groups seeking specific boundary outcomes, it erodes public trust and undermines the fairness this process is supposed to guarantee. Our community has no trust in the outcome of your current process. We urge you to reject these scenarios and recommit to one that actually solves the utilization problem and serves all families with fairness, transparency, and integrity. Every student in our county deserves the process of trust. Thank you.
Laura Glisten.
How do you follow that? My name is Laura Glisten, and I'm a parent, also a parent, from Hamilton Estates in Riva. I'm here tonight because every one of the six proposed redistricting plans impacts my family, and not one of them provides a clear data-driven reason why. In all scenarios, Hamilton and Glen Isle communities will become an attendance island, cut off from the rest of our assigned zone, which directly conflicts with AACPS's own policy and stated goals. When we asked why, we were told the process needed to get more surgical based on community feedback, but that explanation is not good enough. It doesn't show how our feedback has been considered, and it creates the perception that some communities' voices are favored more than others. I've heard some promote the idea that all students within the Davidsonville ZIP Code should attend DES and that there will still be room for more. That logic is fundamentally flawed. Our schools don't belong to ZIP Codes. They serve students based on coherent, contiguous borders. This kind of ZIP Code first thinking has resulted in all six plans requiring my family to travel 4.8 miles through DES boundaries to Central Elementary, while families in the southern part of Davidsonville are only 3.1 miles away from Central Elementary, yet remain at DES. This is not efficient, and it's certainly not equitable. And despite all these changes, Davidsonville Elementary remains at or above capacity in every single plan. None of the proposals achieve the stated goal of balancing enrollment or reducing crowding for this school. Moving forward, without an updated projections and renovation timelines for the 10-year strategic facilities utilization master plan will only lead to more disruption. Pause this redistricting process until it can be done accurately, transparently, and in full compliance with policy, and hold yourselves to the same standard you hold your students to. Thank you.
Hannah Kim.
Good evening, board members. My name is Hannah Kim, and I'm a proud parent of three children at Watch Apple Elementary. I'm here tonight to speak on their behalf as they've been overwhelmed with fear and uncertainty about losing friendships and opportunities as redistricting discussions have reached our homes. I understand that redistricting is necessary, but in our case, removing just 28 students would only further reduce enrollment at Watch Apple while increasing overutilization at Odenton Elementary if redistricting is approved as planned in all proposals. According to the latest SRC data, Watch Apple's utilization has dropped to 94.3%, while Odenton's has risen to 101.5%. There is no new development within Watch Apple's district that would dramatically change those numbers. But this isn't just about numbers, it's about children who have built their foundation at Watch Apple. This cluster of homes has five 4th graders, including my oldest, who would have to move for his final and most memorable year of elementary school. One he deserves to spend with his classmates and teachers, celebrating an end to a journey that they've made together. My second grader, who has had an IEP since the age of 3, has made tremendous progress because of the dedicated staff at Watch Apple. Uprooting him from that trusted environment could jeopardize the years of hard work and growth he's made. As an active-duty military family, we are not native to Maryland and have no relatives nearby. Yet through Watch Apple, we have been fortunate to build a sense of stability and belonging that military families rarely experience, and we deeply appreciate. Please consider allowing our small cluster of homes to remain at Watch Apple, where our children can continue to belong, grow, and succeed together. Thank you.
I'm going to call up five additional speakers. Hayden Adamczyk. I'm going to call up five additional speakers. Peyton Adamczyk, Carly Johnson, David Schloss, Kadee Clary, and Damon Ostis. First speaker will be Peyton Adamczyk. And once again, ladies and gentlemen, you can choose to speak from the podium or at your seat. If you decide to speak from your seat, please move the microphone closer to you. Thank you.
I'm here to speak against the split articulation for Nantucket Elementary School and support legacy options for juniors and seniors. My name is Peyton Adamczyk and I'm a sophomore at Crofton High School and captain of the girls JV soccer team. This redistricting would impact arguably the most crucial college preparation year of high school, my junior year. Crofton is where we belong. We've already built strong relationships with our teachers who are guiding us towards college success. How can I get recommendation letters from teachers I've never had? I plan to continue my experience in the Crofton High School signature program, Safety and Security, that is not offered at Arundel or any other school in Anarundel County. If I'm redistricted, I'll lose that opportunity and the head start on the career path I've been working towards. Dr. Bedell has previously stated that he views the redistricting process from a macro level. However, there are many micro pieces to this unnecessary rushed puzzle like me feeling overlooked. The numbers for Arundel were underestimated and exaggerated for Crofton. As a student, Crofton is not overcrowded, lunches are empty, and I can get to class minutes before the bell rings. After school and on weekends, if my hard-working parents cannot drive me to or from my sports practice, I can easily ride my bike on sidewalks to Crofton High School. The only way to get to Arundel is to cross Route 3, where I'd be unable to ride my bike safely as cars are constantly flying past. My brother Hudson is currently a junior at Crofton. We share classes, study together, and support each other. Splitting us apart would be heartbreaking. The Crofton community is my family and my home. Split articulation is not just a boundary switch, it is the disruption of growth and the creation of instability. I'm a proud straight A student-athlete at Crofton High School, and I ask that you grandfather juniors with seniors and remove split articulation from Nantucket Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly Johnson.
Yeah. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carly Johnson and my son attends Davidsonville Elementary School. I am asking you tonight to delay the vote for redistricting Phase 2 until after the updated Strategic Facilities Plan is released in December, and to reject all six proposals affecting Davidsonville Elementary School, keeping the 27 Reva children from Glen Isle at DES. Throughout these hearings, you've heard many perspectives from families across the county, some of which request that only families in the Davidsonville zip code attend DES. If adopted, DES would become the only school in the district zoned by zip code, setting a precedent inconsistent with every other school boundary in Anarundel County. We've also heard that a new criterion was introduced to preserve Davidsonville boundaries. No other school received that consideration. Parents from Davidsonville area were giving meetings and access to suggest which communities to move, something they publicly acknowledge. Our 27 Glen Isle families were never given that same access or opportunity, yet all six proposals remove our community, even though DES is projected to remain overcapacity for the next nine years. Removing 27 students makes no measurable difference. The very concern raised by Davidsonville parents, transportation time, social and emotional disruption, and the loss of neighborhood and community connection, apply equally to Glen Isle. In fact, our community has attended Davidsonville Elementary School since it opened in 1961. We have multiple generations of families who have walked those halls long before most of the current Davidsonville neighborhoods were even built. We only learned of our proposed reassignment in July and have tried to engage with Dr. Bedell and others, all of whom directed us to Ms. Polium, who has stated she will not support any option that moves the Davidsonville zip code out of DES. We're appealing to you tonight to ensure transparency and fairness. Please delay the Phase 2 vote and reject all six proposals that remove the 27 Reva children from Davidsonville Elementary.
David Schloss.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Schloss, and I'm a resident of the Homeport Community in Edgewater. I stand alongside the residents of the communities of Gingerfield, Willinore, and Poplar Point in Edgewater, who are part of the South River Cluster. I'd like to speak to you today about why redistricting this portion of Edgewater into Annapolis Schools is neither necessary nor supported by the data. The most recent enrollment figures show that there is no demonstrated need to reassign our area of Edgewater to the Annapolis School District. In fact, the data directly contradicts the intent of redistricting. Our removal from South River Cluster would negatively impact the utilization and enrollment balance of schools in the Annapolis Cluster we'd be moving to. These findings are significant enough that even board member Dawn Polium, who originally introduced this amendment for BR 1, 2, and 3, has since attempted to withdraw the amendment citing these very discrepancies. Beyond the numbers, the human impact cannot be overlooked. Our families have longstanding relationships with the South River, Central, and Edgewater schools. We are active in PTAs, extracurricular programs, and community initiatives. The connections built between teachers, students, and parents form the foundation of a thriving educational environment. Disrupting that for no demonstrated benefit would be highly counterproductive to both educational stability and community cohesion. The data is clear, the consequences are clear. We are Edgewater, and we want to remain in the South River, Central, and Edgewater schools, where our families have built success and a strong sense of belonging. We respectfully ask that the board recognize these facts and support the retraction of the amendment to redistrict Gingerfield, Willinore, Poplar Point, and Homeport neighborhoods to Annapolis schools. As of this board meeting, we can only fully support the adoption of Superintendent Recommendation 3, as it is the only redistricting recommendation that supports our needs and has the smallest impact on other communities and the redistricting plans. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Kadee Clary.
Good evening. My name is Katie Clary and I am a sophomore in the Apex Arts Program at Annapolis High School. I have been in the Apex Program for five years, and when I accepted my high school seat two years ago, I made a commitment to the Apex Program as well as Annapolis High School. Superintendent's Recommendation 2 and Board Recommendation 2 seek to move Annapolis's Apex Arts Program to Severn Run in the 2027-28 school year. This happens to fall right on my class's senior year. Senior year is a time crucial for all students, regardless of program. An abrupt move to another school would mess up all the accomplishments we've been achieving at A High and classes and clubs. I won't have the teachers I've come to know so well, and I won't have the same club and sports opportunities that Annapolis offers. Students in the Apex Program are typically very involved in the Annapolis High School community. So many students' leadership roles and activity networks would be wrecked. This recommendation also gives rise to a whole bundle of transportation issues. Any student or parent would be familiar with the bus problems our schools have been having. A move to Severn Run would require the schools hire more out-of-area buses that would aggravate that issue. At Annapolis, we share our out-of-area buses with IB and NJROTC students. Apex also requires special transportation services to connect us to Studio 39, which is very close to my school. Looking at the map, Severn Run is quite a ways away from Studio in relation to Annapolis. By the time we get there from Severn Run, Apex will be half over. The board should not interfere with our classes at the price of our learning. Do not vote for Superintendent's Recommendation 2 or Board Recommendation 2. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Katie. Damon Ostis. Damon Ostis. Okay, I'm going to be calling up five more people. Andrew O'Brien, Vivian Hack, Chris Johnson, Christopher Fox, and Emery Laskowski.
Good evening. My name is Andrew O'Brien. I'm a proud parent of two Eastport Elementary School students. I'm here to demand any changes to the Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere Cashments be removed from consideration. Dr. Tobin, when we invited you to speak with our PTA, you said you were approaching this with humility, and you promised to reverse course if the community showed up and demonstrated harm. Although we're a small school, last week, you all heard from 16 speakers opposed to this change. We've written and emailed, and we've detailed the harms to our children and communities. Parents without cars who will have to cross too busy streets, family support networks split apart, and speaking for families like mine, students in special ed being ripped away from the staff, stability, and familiarity that have allowed them to thrive. Tonight, over the coming hours, you will hear even more. Dr. Tobin, when you introduced this, you spoke passionately and rightly about how the racial history of our city was at the source of many of the problems we still see in the Annapolis Cluster. Yet, you immediately conceded that this would be a net loss for diversity in all three of the schools. Based on the current numbers, Georgetown East needs 70 more students to remain eligible for state funding. Your plan nets 20 from neighborhoods who already send their kids to public school. Why are we talking about moving 1,000 under-enrolled houses out of this cashman instead of acting on previous recommendations that would increase enrollment? Dr. Tobin, people who have worked with you say that this is an issue that you truly care about. While I believe them, I struggle to reconcile that with this, offering a preferential choice as a perk to those who have not shown up for the public school that they already have. This change strengthens the historic racial disparities we want to solve. It disregards that redistricting is about utilization and not preference, and it ignores the harm to the students in all three schools. This is unnecessary, actively detrimental, and worse than doing nothing. Dr. Tobin, please end this. Withdraw all these changes to the Annapolis Cluster. Thank you.
Vivian Hack.
Thank you for having me, Dr. Bedell and board members, and thank you to Brayden for being my student representative. Hello, my name is Vivian Hack. I live in Gingerfield in Edgewater, Maryland. And behind me are some of my friends from Route 2. I am a current 5th grader at Edgewater Elementary. Being at Edgewater Elementary has given me so many opportunities, such as safety patrol, orchestra, announcements, chorus, cast in the play, and Vex Robotics Club. I also play field hockey and lacrosse with South River Youth Athletics. I am so involved in all these activities because I love my community and I love my hometown, Edgewater. Middle school can be a big change for rising 6th graders. I am excited and a little nervous to go into middle school next year. All my friends I've known since kindergarten will be moving on to central middle school, and I want to be, and I want to experience this big change with the people I've grown up with in Edgewater Elementary. There's room for us to belong, grow, succeed at Edgewater Elementary, Central Middle School, and South River High School. I ask you to support Ms. Polium in withdrawing Amendment 2. Please keep Edgewater kids in Edgewater schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Chris Johnson, board, Dr. Bedell, from Reva, Maryland. So, my ask is that the board be proactive and fix the plan to prevent kids from having to move to change schools three times in three years. So, I'm active-duty military, stationed, just got stationed here this summer, two kids in Davidson Elementary. Before that, I was two years in Colorado. Before that, I was two years in Japan. Before that, we started off in Pensacola, Florida. So, we move around a lot. That's part of the deal, and that's fine. But this isn't simply a one-time change. For those of us who just moved here this year, we're starting a new school this year, and will be redistrict potentially into a new school next year. Three schools in three years is excessive. Not just a military problem, but it affects the military community disproportionately. And this was foreseeable in part because of the construct and timeline the board decided on to vote in November affecting the next school year. So, when my house was under contract, I haven't even moved in yet, but I saw that the only decision was to move my kids from Davidson Elementary School to Edgewater. Those were the only proposals that were going to be voted on. I recognized that was a bad situation. I emailed Ms. Dawn Pullman, "Hey, let me start at Central Elementary School and grow our roots there, or let me stay at Davidsonville for at least a few years after we start," right? That option was not provided. I've only been advised that, you know, there's an appeal or petition I can do, you know, after the inevitable, you know, board decision on moving us. But the board can do better, right? And my neighbors pointed out, the board can pause all of this and get a data-driven, better data-driven decision, or you can build in grandfather clauses to address the real issue of that sense of belonging being eroded. So, please fix the plan or grandfather a sin. Thank you.
Christopher Fox.
Good evening. My name is Chris Fox, and I've lived in the Piney Orchard section of Odenton since 2004. My oldest son graduated from Arundel High in 2024, and our middle son will graduate from Arundel in June. Both boys did well at Arundel, qualifying for National Honor Society, captaining multiple Arundel sports teams, among other extracurricular activities. Our youngest son is an 8th grader at Arundel Middle School. Under the superintendent's proposals, he, like a portion of other Piney Orchard students, will be assigned to MEED instead of Arundel. I'm here to urge the board to select one of the board-recommended proposals for redistricting. The board-recommended proposals are superior to the superintendent's recommendations with regards to Piney Orchard families and students. All of the board-recommended proposals prioritize what the broader community has emphasized through multiple rounds of public feedback: maintain theater patterns, maintain assignment stability, and limit the travel distance to school. The superintendent's proposals don't prioritize any of these considerations for Piney Orchard students, nor does it seem to follow the guidelines that school lines adhere to the natural or man-made boundaries. In fact, as someone who's not affected by the MEED move told me, the superintendent's proposals look like a bad political gerrymander. I've discussed this with many of our neighbors and community members. I've canvassed all Labor Day weekend with people in Gambrels and Odenton, and I could tell you that the people of Piney Orchard overwhelmingly are against splitting anybody from Piney Orchard into the MEED cluster. There's no overcrowding at Arundel. None of the consultants' models indicated it, so if there's no overcrowding, it doesn't serve our students' interest.
Your time has expired, sir. Thank you. Emery Laskowski. Emery.
My name is Emery Laskowski. I am an Eastport Elementary graduate. Please do not redistrict Eastport Elementary. You will disrupt many friendships and a strong community. You should drive by Eastport after school and see all the friends on the playground. I helped fundraise to build the playground and basketball courts, one of the main hubs of our neighborhood. I decided to attend Central STEM because I love math, and I'm pretty good at it. I use my math skills to review the statistics. They do not support the amendment. Changing the boundary will not bring Georgetown East to target capacity. Student travel will be increased. There is no overcrowding to resolve. Follow the math and remove the amendment impacting Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. Thank you.
Thank you. Olga Kalashko, Brian Tillman, Kieran Laskowski, Kyle Durbin, and Angelina Kalashico.
Good evening, Board of Education. I am a mother of two students from Central Elementary School and a resident of South River Colony. I'm asking Board of Education to keep 37 students from South River Colony at Central Elementary School and do not move them to Edgewater Elementary School. According to the data that was presented at multiple Board of Education meetings, there is no need for implementation of this move. There was no reasoning, logic, or foundation that was laid out for establishing such a move. Every presentation simply stated 37 children from Central Elementary have to move to Edgewater Elementary, with no explanation why such move is necessary. Board of Education members multiple times stated that they want to cause as little disruption as possible and move as little amount of students as possible. Since move of 37 students from South River Colony will not solve overutilization problems of other neighboring school, then why would you move with disruption of well-established routines and lives of families for those 37 students? AACPS goals are for students to belong, grow, and succeed. 37 students from South River Colony have built strong connection and friendship over the years at Central Elementary. If they pulled away from their school and moved without the will of their own families, then how would you expect them to feel like they belong at school or grow successfully? They would feel like outsiders at Edgewater Elementary. It would create unnecessary stress, anxiety, and possibility of academic delays. It would create unnecessary stress, anxiety, and possibility of academic delays. After the new data was presented to the Board of Education, Ms. Pulliam proposed a motion and asked Board of Education to keep South River Colony students at Central Elementary. However, it was shut down without any reasoning. Please, I'm asking Board of Education to reconsider Ms. Pulliam's motion and let South River Colony students to stay at Central Elementary. Thank you.
Brian Tillman.
First, just want to say thank you for listening to our perspectives. We recognize this is not an easy job, so I appreciate the work you're doing for our community and our children. My name is Brian Tillman. I'm from Poplar Point in Edgewater, a father of two boys in Edgewater Elementary, Teddy, age nine, and Eli, age seven. We first came, I first came to this community 20 years ago to attend St. John's and quickly met the woman who'd be my wife. We got married at Hemlock Farm in Edgewater. We chose Edgewater as our home. It's the community where we raise our children. It's been fantastic. Kids have great friends. Teddy's soccer team's five and two, South River. Let's go. It's home, it's our community. So I'm here along with many others from the Route Two corridor to oppose the amendment that would see the children of Poplar Point, Gingerville, Will Eleanor, and Home Park removed from the South River Cluster. The Board has stated that data, utilization, stability, safety, and community are factors that are being considered to motivate these decisions. So I'm going to go full Johnny and try Euclid here and propose a proposition, and that is this: Poplar Point, Gingerville, and Will Eleanor and Home Park belong in the South River Cluster. The proof, the data, and I mean all the data, all the data that's ever existed, new data, old data, all shows that there is room for our students to remain in Edgewater, Central, and South River. The same data shows because there is room, our students will not contribute to overutilization. Uprooting students from one school cluster into another creates instability. Increasing the commute distance as much as three times from Poplar Point to Rolling Knolls reduces safety. Removing students from their community removes families from the community, and that creates disruption beyond the school alone. So for these reasons, data, utilization, stability, safety, and community, I say QED.
Thank you.
The proof is clear.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Kieran Laskowski.
My name is Kieran Laskowski. I'm a fourth grader at Eastport Elementary. Please do not change my, my last year, fifth grade. I like being a part of a walkable community. I can walk to school, bike to school, scooter to school, or my mom can drive me to school when we are running late. We run late a lot. Keep my travels safe and short. I have friends from a lot of schools. My friends at Georgetown East love their school because it is a great school. I think more kids districted to Georgetown East should give it a try. Changing boundaries is not the answer. Please keep me at Eastport. I would like to finish what I started.
Okay, our next speaker is Angelina.
Hi, my name is Angelina and I am a fourth grader at Central Elementary School, Paws Up, and a resident of South River Colony. I am here to ask the Board of Education to stop unnecessary redistricting of my neighborhood to Edgewater Elementary School. It took me a long time to feel like I belong at school, to find friends and feel comfortable. However, now I have so many friends at my school. I have teachers I love and feel safe with. I enjoy spending time with the same group of people every recess, to play freeze tag with them, to walk around and chit chat. I enjoy seeing my teachers from previous years in the hallway to go visit their classrooms. I know every corner of my school. Central has become a home for me. This is not fair that redistricting would take me away from all of this in my final year. Please allow me to graduate, to graduate from the same school and together with my friends I have been with since kindergarten. Thank you.
Megan Chikaron, Shannon McAdams, Candace Joy, Matt Conlon, and Soray Lewis. First speaker is Megan.
My name is Megan Chikaroni, and I'm a longtime neighbor and caregiver for children at Eastport Elementary School. I oppose the shift in boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. Even after moving out of the community, I still volunteer and care for kids who attend Eastport. What I experience in Eastport is something special, a school where children are known by name, families are welcomed, and learning extends beyond the classroom into the heart of the community. This kind of connection doesn't happen everywhere. It's the result of years of trust, hard work, and investment by the families, teachers, and staff who make Eastport what it is. Please reject these boundary changes and protect the school's communities that are already doing so much good for the Annapolis families. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Bedell, Dr. Heiser, and staff. Thank you for your service and for the hard work you are doing on behalf of our families and our schools. My name is Shannon McAdams. My husband and I have four young children, all eight and under, and all are attending or soon will attend Edgewater Elementary School. We are deeply rooted in our school community in the South River Cluster with my husband having attended these schools himself. If this amendment moves Will Eleanor, Gingerville, and Poplar Point out of the South River Cluster and into the Annapolis Cluster, it would disrupt their development at a critical age. Their friendships, their sense of place, and their confidence are all being formed right now. Uprooting them at this stage would be devastating to our family and to many families like mine. Beyond the emotional impact, the data does not support this amendment. Annapolis High School is already at 100% capacity. This amendment would push it to 102%. South River High School is at 75% utilization and would drop to 73% if our neighborhoods were reassigned, further underutilization, underutilizing the school we actually attend. Edgewater Elementary is not overcrowded, and the superintendent's recommendation number three confirms it has room to welcome students. This amendment would send children outside their home community across more heavily congested roads like 665 West Street and Generals Highway, separating them from their peers and support systems. This proposal is not necessary, not supported by the data, and harms the stability of young children at a formative stage in life. I support Dawn Pulliam's effort to remove the amendment and respectfully ask the Board to remove the Will Eleanor, Gingerville, Poplar Point amendment. Please keep our children in the South River Cluster where they belong and are thriving. Thank you.
Candace Joy.
My name is Candace Joy. I'm here to voice my opposition to BR2 and SR2. I live in Arnold. I graduated from Savannah Park High School. I have three AACPS students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I think one of the most important issues with BR2 and SR2 is the need for additional buses, which is not workable in a school system that struggles to get students to school on time sometimes already. Moreover, the loss of instructional time for APAC students would be unacceptable. APAC students move from Annapolis when inevitably have increased transportation times as every school in the county is further away from Studio 39 than Annapolis High. Meanwhile, broadneck APAC students will have to wait at their seats at the studio until the arrival of their peers. It's also important to note that location plays a major role in a family's decision to participate in a magnet program. I'm the sole active parent of three children and made a difficult decision to allow my student to pursue her artistic talent with understanding that the program would be housed at Annapolis. As it seems Severn Run is no longer a viable destination for APACs, not that it ever was a reasonable option, it's unbelievable to me that the Board is forging ahead with this process without having named a school to receive the APACs program. It was also determined at the October 15 meeting that moving APACs is no longer necessary based on the updated enrollment numbers. It's my opinion that BR2 and SR2 should be removed from the list of options before the Board. Finally, if BR2 or SR2 are chosen, the legacy provision offered by the Board to every other high school junior or senior impacted by redistricting must be offered to APAC students as well. If that's not feasible, then moving APACs is not a fair option. My student attended Bates and is attending Annapolis. This is her cohort, her cross-country team, her people. I do not want her to lose APACs, but she should be given the choice if you move the program to stay at Annapolis, even though it's not her neighborhood high school through graduation. Annapolis is her high school too. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
My name is Matt Conlon, and I'm a parent at Eastport Elementary School. I oppose the shift of the boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. Eastport families have invested deeply in this school. Along with the staff, the students, the school families, the small businesses, neighbors, and AACPS itself, this community has raised more than $300,000 to create a new green space and playground. That project represents years of collaboration and a shared belief that our public schools are worth investing in. We're proud of AACPS and was part of that effort and because it showed what can happen when schools and communities work together. That's the kind of partnership that we should be expanding on, not undoing. The same level of investment and commitment is needed across the entire Annapolis Cluster. Every school in this city deserves to feel the same energy, attention, and pride. Moving families around doesn't build stronger schools, investing in them does. I urge the Board to reject all boundary changes and continue supporting the partnership that makes every Annapolis school stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Soray Lewis.
My name is Soray Lewis. I'm a parent at Eastport Elementary. I also work at an OB-GYN office where I help many Spanish-speaking families navigate pregnancy, postpartum care, and early childhood needs. I oppose the shift of boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. Every day, I see families who are doing their best to provide stability for their children in a world that already feels uncertain. Through our baby pantry, I've helped supply families in Annapolis Cluster with more than 600 cans of formula, along with other newborn essentials. These are the families who attend our public schools, families who rely on consistency and connection to meet their most basic needs. This population does not need to navigate school boundary changes on top of everything else that they already change in. Moving children and separating communities only adds to the challenges these parents experience, especially for those who are still learning the language or new to the school system. Public schools are meant to be a source of stability and safety, not one more thing families have to worry about. I urge the Board to reject all boundary changes and stand for stability, compassion, and depend on public schools the most. Thank you.
Next we have Pamela Hamiti, Harper Conlon, Saki Ververas, Michael David, and Laura Booth. First speaker is Pamela.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Pamela Hamiti, and I'm here as a parent deeply concerned about the proposed redistricting that would move 28 Watch Apple Elementary students, including my own, to Odenton Elementary. I'm a mother of three boys, two of them currently attend Watch Apple, and one of them just started kindergarten. And this is his first real school experience for him, and he is emotionally sensitive and has finally found comfort and confidence in his classroom and his teachers. It's a huge step for him. So for him and for many others, stability and familiar faces are essential for learning and emotional growth. As a former elementary school teacher, I've seen the effects of redistricting firsthand. It may look like lines on a map, but for children, it's losing their friends, their trusted teachers, and the sense of belonging that gives them confidence to learn and grow, and that directly affects the parents and teachers as well. These relationships are the foundation of their emotional and academic success. And based on the updated data shared with the Board, future overcrowding is no longer a concern. In fact, Watch Apple will be underutilized even if these students stay. So the question becomes, why are we risking all these? Why risk disrupting their emotional stability, their relationships and their friendships, and the trust that they've built for a change that's no longer necessary? So I respectfully ask the Board to remove Watch Apple Elementary from the redistricting plan and allow these 28 children to remain where they are safe and feel connected and valued. Please don't take away the community, the community that's helping them grow. Thank you for your time and for listening to the families you serve. Thank you.
Harper.
My name is Harper Conlon, and I'm in fourth grade at Eastport Elementary. I oppose to the shift in boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. I oppose to this because you are taking away my friend's ability to walk to school. I live almost a mile from my school, and I walk with these kids and families every morning and every afternoon. If you make them move, I won't be able to see them after school or before school. Our Eastport community depends on each other. We look out for each other and we speak up for each other when something is happening that pulls our community apart. Please don't make these changes until you have accurate information and data. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Harper. Saki Ververas.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, President Silkworth, members of the Board, NAACP's staff. My name is Saki Ververas, and I'm a Davidsonville parent with two daughters at Davidsonville Elementary, one in fourth grade and one in second. First, I want to thank you for the thoughtful and transparent way you've led this process. It's clear how much effort has gone into listening to families from all across the area and trying to balance so many competing priorities, capacity, transportation, and community continuity. I also want to recognize that redistricting is hard for everyone involved. These decisions affect real families and friendships, and there's no perfect solution. I have a lot of respect for all the parents here tonight who've spoken up for their communities and for their kids. For my family, I'm grateful that the current proposals keep Davidsonville students together. That sense of continuity, being able to grow up with the same classmates, teachers, and neighborhood friends, has been so important for my daughter's development. It's helped them feel grounded and confident, and I believe it's something worth serving if possible. We know you still have difficult choices ahead, and we appreciate how seriously you've taken this responsibility. Thank you for considering the community perspective and for continuing to weigh what's best for all of our students across the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael David.
Hi, my name's Mike Davitt, and I'm here tonight to speak about the redistricting decisions that affect Central Elementary School, specifically the South River Colony families that were inexplicably reassigned to Edgewater Elementary. And to go even further, I'm here to represent three little girls. One is mine, that is in fourth grade at Central Elementary, that would be removed next year if the redistricting, redistricting went through as is. At the October 15 meeting, Ms. Pulliam asked a simple question to AACPS. Why were the original data-driven scenarios one, two, and three replaced with SR1 and two? The response from the district was essentially community feedback and reviews of logistics. Of the 8,400 comments that you could sift through on the website, I couldn't find anybody that stood up and said, "I'd like Central Elementary kids removed from the school when it's not necessary." Built from WXY's research, these three original models clearly showed up to 200 students needed to be reassigned from Davidsonville Elementary. Those scenarios were developed without bias or outside influence, yet they were literally wiped off the map in favor of revisions that are not supported by any of the criteria or data that was supposed to drive this effort. The name for that is gerrymandering. The current plans to move only 27 kids from DES, leaving still over 100% capacity, fails to address the core problem, and was also stated that a possible solution would be to appeal to the state to change the SRC. So instead of resolving a problem, we're going to move the goalposts. I don't know how that is acceptable. The community has been here for weeks, beyond weeks. The community has been here for weeks, beyond weeks, in a three-year process. I hear nothing but data, data, data. I hear little kids giving analytic lessons because they can read the data. And the reason we're all saying data, data, data is because of all of you. You said this would be data-driven. It's not. And if it is, we cannot see the math that supports it. So please, pause this effort. Listen to everybody that's been here before you.
Your time has expired.
Reconsider data-driven options.
Laura Booth.
Good evening. My name is Laura Booth, and I thank you for the time and energy you've brought to this process. It may not be possible to come up with a plan that everyone can agree with, but you can come up with a plan that we can have confidence in. To do that, you need to commit to using the best data you possibly can. At the October 15 meeting, you said that you won't have enrollment numbers by grade until December. If you don't have an accurate number of how many students are in fifth grade now, how can we have confidence in your projections, that your projections are accurate for sixth grade next year or ninth grade four years from now? At the start of this process, you said that the educational facilities master plan would be used to guide your decision-making. You won't receive that plan until December, but you insist that you need to vote this month. So if you don't have the most accurate estimates for the number of students or the number of seats that you have to put them in, how can you have confidence that you are making the best decision for our county? It is hard for us to have confidence in plans that strip resources away from students. Mills Parole Elementary School is a community school, as is Annapolis Middle and Annapolis High School. South River is not a community school. Moving Mills Parole students to South River means removing access to wraparound services that students and families need. Similarly, moving Apex away from Studio 39 means reducing access to collaboration opportunities with students at Broadneck and in the local arts community. You're taking away the very reason these students signed up for this program in the first place. Your plan should not create more problems than it solves. You have a responsibility to make the best decision you can, not the fastest. Please work on a plan that will preserve student access to resources, and please delay voting until you have the data that you need to make the right decision for our families. Thank you.
Deborah Satkaviak, Brian Sparrow, Carrie Riddings, Jessica Wyder, and Peter Larson. Come on down. Our first speaker is Deborah Clowry.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Satkaviak Clowry, and my testimony is in opposition to remove Apex Arts from Annapolis High and move it to Severn Run. My family resides in the Broadneck Cluster, and I am the parent of two teenagers, the older of which is a sophomore at Annapolis High in the Apex Arts Program. Students must audition to participate in the Apex Arts Program, and if they are accepted, they commit to remain with the program throughout their high school years. Proposals to move Apex away from A High are a bait and switch for those who have committed to Apex at A High. Apex students participate in extended-day programming held at Studio 39, which is a wonderful facility located just minutes from A High. As proposed, students would be bused a minimum of 30 minutes from Severn Run for extended day alone that would deprive students of over an hour of learning and creative time each week. That would also put a travel strain on our Apex teachers. Bates Middle, where my daughter was accepted into Apex Arts at first, is a feeder school program, excuse me, is a feeder school to the programming at A High. Bates's proximity to A High is underpinning the likelihood that students will continue in the Apex Arts Program. Most notable, the proposals would move my daughter and her cohort in her senior year. While the board is considering legacy student status for seniors and juniors impacted by other redistricting, this is not an option for Apex kids, who would either have to leave their program or leave their school. The loss of leadership positions, club activities, sports opportunities would impact their college applications. If you feel that you must make this move, I implore you to please delay until 2029 to allow parents and students to make fully informed decisions when they are committing to a four-year Apex program. Thank you for considering the consequences and practicalities of this move.
Brian Sparrow. Brian Sparrow. Okay, our next speaker, Carrie. Carrie Riddings.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Riddings. I have four children, one of which has already completed their journey through the AACPS school system. Two are currently at Central Elementary and would be redistricted during their fourth and fifth grade years. And then I have my little one, who is set to start kindergarten next fall alongside her siblings. I'm here tonight just to oppose all six recommendations involving the redistricting of South River Colony neighborhoods from Central Elementary School to Edgewater Elementary School. Quite simply, as many have stated in this room, the recommendations are not supported by the data. Central's utilization is currently 93% and projected to remain stable, rising only slightly to 94% with the 2033 projections. Even if Central were to assume the 27 students from Davidsonville Elementary, the school would remain under capacity at around 97%. So this isn't a question of space, it's a question of sense. The numbers don't justify uprooting the students that are thriving in their current environments. Meanwhile, Davidsonville Elementary would still be over 100% utilization, even with the proposed redistricting. The recommendations don't solve the overcrowding issue, they just shift the problem and disrupt the community and our students. But the impact extends far beyond just the statistics in the data. Central operates from 8:00 AM to 2:25 PM, while Edgewater runs from 8:30 to 2:55. That half-hour difference may not sound like much, but for many families, it creates a potential hardship. For my family, a dual-working parent household like so many in our community, it means we now need both before and after care. Our children would spend even longer hours away from home, and depending on the availability of childcare, this change could also limit their ability to participate in after-school activities such as community sports. In short, these proposals create unnecessary disruption without solving the problem they aim to address. I urge the board to amend the recommendations to remove the redistricting of Central Elementary School students from Central to Edgewater. Thank you.
Jessica.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jessica Weider, and I'm a Crofton Middle School and Nantucket Elementary School parent. I'm here tonight to support the board's proposed amendment to keep Nantucket students in the Crofton Cluster. After following this process closely, one issue has become clear. Confidence in the enrollment data is shaky at best. We have had three different sets of enrollment data since July. When the one-year outlook keeps changing, data can't be relied upon for long-term boundary setting for any school. But for Nantucket, there are a few things we know with certainty. First, at Crofton High School, no one is experiencing actual overutilization. Public testimony is that there is room to spare. Students are thriving academically and socially. We also know, in the Arundel Cluster, housing growth is occurring. Just one example is the 377 new family homes being built in Two Rivers. Redistricting Nantucket students now, only to move them back in five years when capacity shifts again, would be a poor use of time and resources. Maintaining Crofton alignment provides stability for both families and for the school system. What this process also highlights is how much community matters. Nantucket is the only school in the county where split articulation is being proposed. That means the disruption doesn't happen once, it happens every single year. Fifth-grade graduations stop being celebrations, they start becoming farewells. Each year, friends are separated, families lose their support networks, and children lose their sense of belonging. So we look at the facts, unstable enrollment data, clear evidence that Crofton is not actually overcrowded, documented growth in the Arundel Cluster, and the repeated harm caused by split articulation. Logical choices to pass the board's amendment, I urge you to keep Nantucket students together in the Crofton Cluster. Thank you.
Pete Larson.
Hi, my name is Peter Larson, and I am a fourth grader at Nantucket Elementary School. Currently, I'm not being redistricted, but many of my friends may be sent to Arundel Middle School and High School. Because of this, I'm here to support the board's recommendations that do not have us split, half of us going to Arundel and half of us going to Crofton. Since starting school, my parents have told me to make good choices with friends because they could become lifelong friends. They both have elementary school friends, who they still are close to even though they're old now. I have made many good friends since starting kindergarten and would like the chance to continue to grow these friendships like every other elementary school student in the county. It seems really unfair that my friends will have to start over in sixth grade. Next, classing Route 3 is unsafe, and I do not believe sending my fellow students to Arundel Middle School and High School is fair to them. Sisters do not have seatbelts, and the risk of them getting hurt on Route 3 seems too hot. Also, the traffic on Route 3 would mean that they would spend too much time stuck on a bus getting to and from school. Finally, you shouldn't treat people like numbers. I'm asking you to treat people as who they are. Thank you for your time and the chance to speak tonight.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Michael Tomasini, Richard Nines, Deisha Conti, Lane Dixon, and Nee Culbert.
Good evening, and thank you for giving all of us the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Mike Tomasini, and I am a parent of two AACPS students. My children have attended Eastport Elementary, Annapolis Middle, and Annapolis High School. I oppose the shift in boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere Elementary Schools. At these three schools, the learning standards are the same, the teachers share similar qualifications, and the school lunches are equally delicious. And as a Title I school, Georgetown East has more resources and smaller class sizes than many others. This is a school that families should want to attend. AACPS needs to focus on that first and foremost, instead of shifting boundaries. The conversation should not be about moving families around, it should be about lifting up Georgetown East and strengthening every public school in the Annapolis Cluster. If it is the case that roughly only 19% of eligible students in the cluster attend public schools, that number tells us where the real world lies. We need to focus on why families are opting out and work towards creative strategies that will improve enrollment in the cluster. Simple investments in physical appearance at schools, like regular upkeep of outdoor basketball courts and play spaces, are a start, but there is real work that still needs to be done. The school board must recognize this situation and must take meaningful steps to encourage the utilization rate to rise. The same kind of investment and attention is also needed at Annapolis Middle School, which is part of the conversation when families decide to leave public school system. Improving outcomes at Georgetown East is important, but it means little if the children don't have schools to grow into. We can and must do better than moving backward to a system where those with means have more opportunity. We must take responsibility and move forward so the schools truly represent the Annapolis community and all of its students. I urge the board to reject all boundary changes and instead commit to building school communities that reflect the full diversity and strength of Annapolis.
Richard.
Steve Borg, I'm Richard Nines, father of three girls, and I live in Glen Isles. To begin, this forged a vote to allow grandfathering of all students entering both fifth grade and eighth grade, similar to the 11th and 12th grade proposals. Now, for some facts. Facts, we are here to do to an overcrowding of a prior redistricting in 2012 when communities east of Reba Road were moved from Central to Davidsonville. And now the plan is to keep every one of those communities in place and move a flank owner neighborhood who attended DES since it was created 65 years ago, again, permanently moved because of an inept process, flat-out incorrect data, and inappropriate projections. Back, the current recommendation for Davidsonville should have never been put forward. The incorrect state rate of capacity was and continues to be referenced even after the October 15, 2025 enrollment data dump. Our neighborhood was surgically selected and gerrymandered because we didn't provide comments when scenarios 1 through 3 were published in February, all scenarios of which did not include our neighborhood. It was unthinkable that an attendance island would even be the final superintendent recommendation when dozens of contiguous options were obvious available and should have been used. Where are our comments from the period that entered September 5? Where is the analysis from the superintendent comparing our comments to those of the areas that were included in the original conversation and used for this proposal and had their comments heard? We were being robbed of our due process. Back, the 2025 Facility Master Plan, which was published in July before the superintendent's proposal became public, shows the SRC for Davidsonville for 25 through 32 increased to 694. The incorrect use of SRC for the current recommendation was either due to gross negligence or some other nefarious scheme meant to confuse and distract us all. It literally makes no logical sense. If you use the correct SRC for 25, utilization's 99%.
Thank you.
Do what you are elected to do, be leaders, and please reject this proposal. Thank you.
Deisha Conti.
Good evening. My name is Deisha Conti. I am a current student, a parent of a student of a fifth grader. I am also running to be your next city councilor, sixth member. I oppose the shift in boundaries for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere. As someone deeply involved in this community, I believe that strong public schools are built in from the inside out by neighbors, parents, and leaders who invest their time and energy in making them thrive. That's what I've done and I plan to continue to do. That's what so many of our Eastport families have done to help our schools succeed. Public institutions thrive when representatives of the entire community from all backgrounds and neighborhoods work together to make them stronger. We are at our best when we embrace that diversity, not when we move away from it. Efforts to separate communities based on comfort or perception miss the entire point. As strength comes from learning, growing, and working side by side, I urge the board to reject all boundary changes and stand up for strength and diversity for our children in the city of Annapolis.
Thank you. Lane Dixon.
All right, I'm number 51, so I think you guys are halfway through. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today to express my concern and frustration with the proposal and board recommendations 1, 2, and 3 to remove students from the Poplar Point, Ginger Ville, Will Eleanor Neighborhoods, and Home Board, of course, from their current schools. My concern with these proposals is pretty straightforward. If you choose to amend Dr. Bedell's recommendations, and I use "choose" purposefully, this dislocation of our neighborhoods will be uprooting and impacting hundreds of kids, including my son, who's a freshman at South River, and my daughter, who's a seventh grader at Central Middle, at the exact time that their education relies on having a stable and trusted community safety net, and that is critical to their success. It's not just our families that you're moving that will be impacted either. I just came from a South River football game, and there are other families that we support, that we love, and that we carpool with, frankly, that also rely on us remaining where we are. It takes a village, as they say, and make no mistake, our village is Edgewater. Both parents and kids from our neighborhoods have built these foundations with hard work, commitment to their neighbors, and love for their community. My frustration with this proposal is even simpler. It's all pain and no gain. Moving our communities doesn't solve any problems based on any numbers that we've seen, the old data, the new data, or just simply observing how well our schools function and operate. We have heard for months about the importance of data-driven decision-making and transparency of this process, and yet this proposal was airdropped in and has changed a number of times. It also ignores the very clear numbers that show there's plenty of room for us to stay at our existing schools. These kids, my kids, and others have already lived through COVID, redistricting one other time, and we need this cycle to end.
Thank you. Nee Culbert.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nee Culbert. I'm the president of the Eastport Elementary School PTA, a graduate of Eastport Elementary School, but most importantly, a mother to three incredible Eastport skipjacks. I oppose the shift in boundaries to Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere because what's being proposed here takes us backward and not forward. It pushes us toward a school system that is less diverse. It'll feel separated, and it is not a representation of the city that we say we are. Eastport Elementary is what happens when a community invests in its school. We've built something. We've built something special here at Eastport, a place where children from every background can learn side by side, where differences are not divided but celebrated. That didn't happen by accident. This happened because families, teachers, and neighbors believe that public education should reflect the whole community, not just a part of it. This amendment undermines that. It divides schools along the lines of comfort, privilege, and perception. And let's just be honest here, we're talking about moving certain families away from a school that is more black and brown and into a school that is considered whiter and and wealthier. And that's not progress. That's a step in the wrong direction. AACPS says it values equity and belonging, and if that's true, and your tensions are in not to uproot diversity in our schools, then this proposal this proposal just can't go forward. You can't talk about dismantling inequity while voting to recreate it. So I urge you to please reject all boundary changes and take a real stand for diversity. Take a real stand for equity and inclusion and not just in words, but in action, starting here tonight in this room with these families. Thank you so much for hearing us.
Our next five speakers are Stephanie Raymer Mead, Brett Sterinson, Chelsea Treadwell, Ryan Caminiti, and J.J. Joy.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Raymer Mead, and I have a freshman in Apex program. And I'm here on behalf of all the Apex families to ask that you please keep Apex at Annapolis High School. First, Apex students must travel to Studio Thirty-nine during the day. If the program is moved further away, that travel continues to grow, cutting core instruction time, Apex plus academic support, clubs, and even lunches with their peers. We effectively are shrinking the school day for Apex students, which devalues the program they earned a spot in. Annapolis also houses all of the veteran Apex teachers who make this program possible. Secondly, today, out of the area, Apex students ride the same buses as other students, including the IB program. Moving Apex means adding buses and costs. More distance turns transportation into a barrier, especially for families who rely on proximity. An equity program cannot depend on who can afford extra time and rides. Thirdly, Severn Run would would not have the space. This move would push it to roughly a hundred and seven percent capacity right after opening and redistricting. Advancing a relocation without naming a viable destination or reopening public comment once a destination is identified undercuts transparency and community trust. Our ask is that you remove the Apex relocation from consideration. Keep Apex at Annapolis High School where the teachers, transportation network, and the partnership that supports student success already exists. Thank you for our time and, most importantly, your commitment to these students.
Thank you. Brett.
My name is Brett Sterinson, and I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Nantucket and a seventh grader at Crofton Middle. I'm here today to support board recommendations BR one, two, and three, which allow all Nantucket students to remain in the Crofton cluster. First, a warm thank you to AACPS for these two forums. Watching my kids and other kids alike advocating for themselves was a proud moment that I will not soon forget. I'm obligated, though, to highlight one moment of disillusionment a few weeks back when the board met following the release of new enrollment data. The data bolstered our community's assertion that our enrollment is decreasing contrary to recent claims, and it underscored what a big mistake we'd be making moving kids from Crofton, where enrollment is decreasing, to Arundel, where it's increasing. Simply moving the problem and leaving open the harsh possibility this very same set of kids would be moved again in a few short years. But when Ms. McFarland asked Dr. Heiser and his team about class-by-class enrollment figures, which help accurately shape the long-term projections, I listened incredulously as her request was dismissed, suggesting the data would not likely be available until December. After the vote, first, how can it possibly be true that we know only total enrollment by school and not by grade? And second, how can we ask this board to adopt a plan without knowing what the long-term implications are when the whole case for redistricting was predicated on projections through twenty thirty-three? We cannot simply look at the net gains and losses for the next school year and ignore the fact that Dr. Bedell's plans would exacerbate overcrowding at Arundel and that Crofton's enrollment is set to level out naturally. Remember, this burden on a small population of Nantucket students is not just happening this year. It will happen in perpetu- perpetuity. Every fifth-grade class will wave goodbye to lifelong friends at their moving-up ceremony. Nowhere else in the county is there a split articulation at the elementary level. Why does AACPS find it acceptable to send such a small group to Arundel who would make just seven percent up there when Frederick County won't even move students unless they represent fifteen percent or more? Board members should not accept this. Community members do not accept this. Please ensure Ms. McDermott's critical amendment passes. No split articulation.
Chelsea Treadwell. Chelsea.
Good evening. Thank you very much for hearing us. My name is Chelsea Treadwell. I am the parent of two daughters at Bates Middle School, both in the Apex program. I'm here to ask you not to move the Apex program out of Annapolis High School. I was going to speak to the data that so many of my fellow parents have spoken to, but I think they've done so eloquently. So instead, I'll tell you about my younger daughter. She is the child that Apex was made for. When she wakes up in the morning, she is dancing. When she eats lunch, she has a very hard time sitting in the chair. When she goes to bed, we gotta end the day with a dance. Getting through school is only possible because she has this creative and physical outlet. She has dyslexia, which makes all of her core classes a real challenge. Apex is a godsend for her. If you move Apex out of Annapolis High School, we will not send her. We know what our transportation systems look like. We know what the traffic, that the traffic is completely unpredictable. We know how many hours that will take out of every day, and actually, we don't know. I mean, the estimates of time that we will be lost between going to and from Studio Thirty-nine in addition to going to and from in the mornings is is really incalculable because of the unpredictable nature of our traffic and our bus system. That alone will cause my family not to send her to Apex. I have not talked to another parent who is willing to take on the additional logistical nightmare that going further away would create in addition to the lost academic and social time at school. So I ask you to think of her and all of her, um, peers when we're making the decision about moving Apex. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian. Brian Caminiti.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Caminiti, and I am a tenth grader at Crofton High School. In AP history class last year, Mr. Smith taught us that any statement must be backed up with evidence, and in any math class I've ever taken, we have to show our work. Members of the public have expressed concern via emails and smaller meetings about the accuracy of the data. We've also questioned the process and whether or not it actually follows your own policy, but at no time have any of you actually had to answer our questions. I've worked so hard to fully understand everything going on with this process, and I keep wondering why this board doesn't have to show its work. For example, we still don't know what the enrollment will be at each of the impacted schools in two, five, or ten years if you make these moves. We still don't know how the diversity of Crofton High School would be impacted, and we still don't know how many students will actually be moved based on the most recent enrollment figures. You've never shown your work. We've asked repeatedly how the enrollment projections that are in the EFMP were calculated, and not one single person has provided that explanation. Why are students like me being held to a higher standard than the people running our school system? And worse, when a group of my peers met with Mr. Morgan after many meetings as a group and hours spent learning and understanding this process, we were accused of, quote, "just saying what our parents wanted us to say." Instead of feeling empowered and competent, we were made to feel belittled and powerless. Nothing about this process has focused on the impact on students, and when we've tried to advocate for ourselves, we've been accused of being our parents' pawns. I want to state clearly, I understand so much about this process, and it's clear to me that this process is extremely flawed. If you can't show your work and you can't provide the evidence for your decisions, then you shouldn't be moving forward with decisions that will have detrimental impacts on actual kids. Please stop this process now. Make decisions in two years when you will know if the recent enrollment changes are trends or flukes.
Thank you, Ryan. Your time has expired.
And then in two years, please show your work. Thank you.
J.J. Joy.
Good evening. My name is J.J., and I'm a sophomore in the Annapolis High School Apex program. I also participated in the Apex program at Bates Middle School. Annapolis High School is where all my friends are. I've been in school with them since I was eleven years old. If the Apex program is moved, it would cause irreparable damage to friendships I've spent years building. I've heard comments in prior redistricting hearings and some in this one from other students that they would no longer get to see their neighborhood friends in school. However, if Apex was to be moved, then I would not even get to see my friends in school or my neighborhood. Although I have friends in the Apex program, many of my friends go to Annapolis as their homeschool. In addition to that, all the Apex students have worked hard to audition to go to Annapolis, and it does not make sense to punish that effort by disrupting our program halfway through our high school career. I love my high school, and I cannot imagine going anywhere else. Please do not move Apex. Please keep Annapolis students in Annapolis by voting for SR three or BR three when it comes time to vote for redistricting options. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call up our next five speakers. Mark Clasico, Erin Palachowski, Alicia Straw, John Nguyen, and Misty Heckinger. Speaking first will be Mark.
Uh, thank you all for allowing the public to speak and comment on this daunting task of redistricting students in the post-pandemic world that has even the calmest of parental minds weary about anything education-related. My two children, Angelina and Max, must go to Central Elementary, a school that I myself attended. When we moved home from Chicago, we made sure we picked a neighborhood that fed into the central Tiger community. Several of the families watching did the exact same thing. Even Dr. Bedell mentioned at the start of the session just last week that parents choose their homes based on the school system. Several families in our neighborhood have chosen homeschool since COVID, and two more families now want to do the same thing. Anarondale County has some of the best schools in the country, but once a child starts, there better be a gosh-darn good reason to uproot their lives. And Dawn proposed, uh, that moving us, she proposed keeping us at Central, and it would keep ninety-seven percent. So I just ask that you please do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bedell. My name is Erin Palachowski, and I have two children who attend Belvedere Elementary in Arnold. Since the beginning of this process, every single recommendation has moved eighty-eight children from Belvedere to Arnold Elementary, including both of mine. Fifteen of those students are who I am here speaking for. I am speaking for the fifth graders of next year. Please listen to those fourth-grade kids that spoke tonight, Kiran and Harper, and how they asked and pleaded to you so that they could finish their elementary career with their peers. Our fifteen students have belonged to the Belvedere community and have grown socially and academically with a staff who knows and helps them succeed every day. These bobcats are excited for the unique opportunities that they get at Belvedere next year's fifth graders, such as Safety Patrol, Yearbook Committee, being part of reading morning announcements, and even after-school clubs, all of these, which are not available when they move to Arnold. Grow, belong, succeed. I said it wrong, but sorry. The motto of Anarondale County Public Schools, we want this to happen. And redistricting has challenged currently our children before they've even moved. It's challenged their current identities, their friendship, possible relationships, and brought up so many ideas and myriads of unknowns and anxieties. We hope that they are able to feel belong and that they grow and that they succeed in one year as Arnold, but to be honest, that may be hard to achieve. So, given the new enrollment data, Belvedere has dropped below a hundred percent capacity before we've even moved these children. We are asking simply that these fifteen children and potentially other redistricted fifth graders get offered the same opportunity being given to eleventh and twelfth graders because these children have never moved to school. They are set to move two schools in a row before they even go off to middle school. Give them the chance to finish their education where they're able, with their elementary kids.
Thank you. Alicia Straw.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia from West Courts and Pine Orchard. I'm here in support of the board's recommendations one, two, or three. Being reassigned to a school on a military base would disrupt established educational and therapeutic services for students, including my son, a fourth grader with an IEP. He has received therapy and behavioral support at Pine Orchard Elementary from kindergarten through now. These services do not transfer to Manor View, MacArthur, or Mead, as the provider does not operate there. Relocating would halt progress and require seeking new services, which is not logistically feasible. The reassignment also poses operational challenges. Access to the military base is limited, complicating emergency procedures, daily drop-off and pickup, and overall coordination for families. Additionally, these children have developed stable peer and academic networks that would be disrupted, creating unnecessary instability. Many of these students are COVID-era kids who had to work extra hard to rebuild social skills, form friendships, and adapt to post-pandemic learning environments. Moving our small neighborhood across town would undermine this progress. Given these practical considerations, we urge the board to adopt a BR one, two, or three, not SR one, two, or three. BR one through three maintains continuity of care and operational safety for our students and families, while SR one through three treats our community like an overflow zone. We respectfully ask that the board take these points into account when making this important decision. I don't envy you. This is a very tough decision, but you see everyone here today. We want, we want change. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is JD Nguyen. My family moved to the Glen Isle neighborhood of Reva about nine years ago. My son is currently a first grader at Davidsonville. He loves going to school, and I feel like it's my job as a parent to do everything I can to keep it that way. So while I commend you all for briefly slowing down the process to bring in the latest enrollment figures, it doesn't look to me like the equally important capacity figures were accurate when this process began. I can say this, since a few months ago, parents in our neighborhood helped identify an unused classroom at Davidsonville Elementary and communicated this to the superintendent, his staff, and the board. This unused classroom, if utilized, would increase the capacity of the school by at least twenty students. As far as I can tell, the Glen Isle and Hamilton neighborhoods were identified in the superintendent's initial recommendations. Since moving that relatively small number of students in the two communities combined, approximately twenty-five kids, to another school would bring Davidsonville Elementary to just under one hundred percent capacity. However, since the capacity of Davidsonville Elementary is higher than previously thought, fewer students need to be moved to accomplish this. To me, at this point, it seems like the primary goal is to disrupt as few students as possible. So it's hard for me to understand how even after this information was brought to the attention of the superintendent, his staff, and the board, every recommendation under consideration still includes moving students from both our communities to Central Elementary and moving students from Central to Edgewater Elementary. The shifting of those students currently at Central to Edgewater, it really seems to only be necessary to make room for the students coming from Davidsonville. As you've heard a number of times, students from the Glen Isle neighborhood have been attending Davidsonville Elementary since nineteen sixty-one. Please consider allowing our kids to continue their educations there. Thank you for your time, but I do want to add one more thing. I've heard it a number of times tonight, you really have to let rising eighth graders and fifth graders stay at their schools. Appreciate it.
Misty Heckinger. Misty? Okay, uh, I'm gonna call up five more, uh, folks to testify. Scott Heckinger, Brennan Pitts, Abby Cohen, Connor Caminiti, and Ellen Black. Scott. Scott.
Good evening. My name is Scott Heckinger. I am the father of Hannah Heckinger, a sophomore at Crofton High School. I know the work you're doing is genuinely difficult. You're weighing imperfect data, capacity numbers, diversity concerns, and 100 other competing priorities, and for that, I am grateful to all of you. Tonight, though, I'd like to talk about something that can't be captured in a spreadsheet and something that we are in need of right now. We're living through a moment when Americans struggle to understand each other. We scroll past each other online, we sort ourselves into like-minded bubbles, trust in our institutions, and each other is fraying. And in the middle of all this uncertainty, the only thing that brings people with disparate beliefs together is our local communities. Communities are not abstract concepts. They're the parents who carpool together, the families who watch each other's kids, the neighbors who shovel driveways and share celebrations, the kids who walk to school together and whose friendships extend from the classroom to the playground to their front yards. The proposed split articulation at Nantucket Elementary would tear apart exactly these kinds of communities. Crofton kids belong in the Crofton Cluster, not because of Route 3, not because Arundel isn't a great school, but because these kids, these families, have built their lives around proximity and connection. Breaking communities like this apart sends kids to schools away from where they live, disconnecting them from the social fabric they've woven over time. And for what? To optimize numbers that may change again in three years? I understand the challenges you're facing, and I'm asking you to consider this. In a time when everything feels uncertain, when we're struggling to connect across our differences, the absolute worst thing we can do is dismantle the communities that actually work. Please don't break apart what's taken years to build, and times like these, strong communities aren't a luxury, they're everything.
Thank you. Brennan. Pitts. Brennan.
My name is Brennan Pitts, and I am in second grade at Two Rivers Elementary School. Because of the multiple redistricting efforts, I have already attended three elementary schools. That has been really hard. I hope you adopt one of the board-recommended plan and reject all three of the superintendent's plans. I have been at Two Rivers for two years, and I finally have a sense of belonging with my Two Rivers family, and I have a really good grades, and I love to learn. Moving my neighborhood to Piney Orchard away from my friends will once again disrupt my learning and destroy the friendships I have at Two Rivers. I also have ADHD, which means falling and staying asleep can be a challenge for me. The extra 45 minutes to one hour I get to sleep with the shorter drive to Two Rivers is important for a kid like me. Getting less sleep just so I can either catch an earlier bus or drive 20 to 30 minutes to Piney Orchard when I can get to Two Rivers in less than 10 minutes is not only not fair, it isn't healthy. Please look at me and the kids in my neighborhood like more than a number. We are people who matter. Please reject moving the Watch Apple enclave neighborhood to Piney Orchard and keep us at Two Rivers Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan. Abby.
Hello, my name is Abby Cohen, and I'm a sophomore at Crofton High School, living in the portion of Nantucket that will potentially be redistricted to a Rundle High School just before my junior year. I support Board recommendations 1, 2, and 3 because they remove the split articulation in the Crofton Cluster. Tonight, you all heard some fantastic data-driven arguments, but I would like to talk about the physical, emotional, and mental toll that this process has taken on me and many other students, including students who will be moved and students who will not be. Redistricting has taken over my life. It is all I can talk about, all I can think about. Heck, I even dream about it. The mere idea of having to leave all my friends, the community I've worked to build, and the relationships I've developed is enough to completely distract me from my schoolwork. I've adopted the mindset of, what's the point? Because it seems foolish to form relationships if it will all be ripped away from me in nine months. Additionally, I'm sure you are all aware of the bus driver strike and the increasing severity of it. When my bus doesn't show up and my parents aren't home, I'm able to ride my bike on sidewalks the entire way to Crofton High School. This is not possible crossing Route 3 to a Rundle. In January, I will be 15 and nine months eligible to get my learner's permit. Being a student driver is already scary enough, but having to drive on Route 3 every morning to school is terrifying. I'm sure the parents in this room won't want to deal with me on the highway either. Surely, the board, made up of people who've dedicated their careers to helping students thrive, would not allow this to become true. If Crofton were truly overcrowded, I would understand the cruel reality, but Crofton is not overcrowded. Just ask any of our students or staff members. Please, I beg of you each to visit Crofton for yourself. In order to justify this mental hardship on so many students, there should be extraordinary gains, but there simply isn't.
Thank you, Abby. Connor.
I am Connor, and I am a fifth grader at Nantucket Elementary. If you don't pass Ms. McDermott's Amendment, then I will be the very first, but not the last, group of students who you make the other kids in my community. You will make me leave behind friends like Timmy, Ellis, and Miller, who don't have to move, but who would still be sad because we would split up. But that's not all it would do. In a few months, the guidance counselors and teachers from Crofton Middle will be coming to my school to tell us about course registration. When they did this for my older brothers, they just came to each homeroom and did a presentation. Please think about what this will look like if you split articulate this very small portion of Nantucket. In each homeroom, there are maybe three or four kids out of 28 who would not be going to Crofton. What would we do during this time? Would we sit there and have to listen to all the great opportunities at a school we won't go to? Will we be asked to leave the class and told to go elsewhere? There is really no way to do this that doesn't make us feel like the other kids. There is a reason you don't split articulate any other elementary schools, because it's awful. It makes kids feel bad. It makes me want to cry just thinking about it. And the worst part is, this would not be a one-time thing. For example, in a few years, this will happen to my sister Tessa, who is in second grade, and my neighbor Haley, who is three years old, would start her time in Nantucket Elementary School, always knowing she was one of the other kids. At Cardinal's First Flight, at the Crofton Halloween Parade each year, at every cluster-wide sports or music event, every kid who lives in this little section of Nantucket will always know that we are one of the other kids who aren't really a part of Crofton. Please don't do this to us. Please don't create a generation of other kids in our community. Please pass Ms. McDermott's Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Ellen Black.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Black, and I'm the parent of two children at Hillsmere Elementary. I'm here to request that Dr. Tobin withdraw the proposal that would expand the catchment area for Hillsmere Elementary to include the communities south of Carrollton Road and change the boundaries for Eastport and Georgetown East. From the testimony and public feedback I've heard, the families advocating for this change are not currently enrolled at AACPS, which leads me to two conclusions. First, this is an effort by these communities to preferentially select a school that they perceive to be more desirable. And second, using current enrollment numbers to project the impact at Hillsmere is severely flawed and will undoubtedly result in the same overcrowding issues that this redistricting process is supposed to solve. Some have argued this is a matter of proximity, but at three-tenths-of-a-mile difference and the added complexity of a left turn against two lanes of traffic during morning rush hour, the argument lacks merit. If these communities instead supported Georgetown East by sending their kids there and getting involved, we might not be having this debate. I urge the board to withdraw this last-minute proposal, which lacks transparency, fails to set forth a true public policy objective, and incentivizes using the redistricting process to advance personal interests. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Elias George, Nicole Strong, Amy Hines, Jennifer Becker, and Spencer Short. Speaking first, Elias George.
Hey, good evening. I'm Elias George, a proud parent of a Kern and a future student at Two Rivers. I support BR3, or any of the BRs really, which maintain the children in my enclave at Watch Apple and the Monarch Communities to stay at Two Rivers. Two Rivers, by far, is the shortest commute, both by car, almost like six minutes, and by bus, 14 minutes shorter than Piney Orchard, and any of the schools really in that area. Additionally, the proposed move back to Piney, which now like with my friend, Mr. Pitts said, we've moved several times, involves travel through dense traffic areas, and one of the areas, the Tuxit area, it's going to be flooded half the time, so then you have to go through that impossible route. What we're really talking about is the sleep of our children, the wellness of our children, and you know, why would a five-year-old have to get up at 7:00 to get on a bus? That just makes me mad, just being frank. Also, one of the big things that they stated was that the growth of the area around Two Rivers, around Myers Station, adding 377 homes, that hasn't even been approved yet. It's not even been submitted fully. It's under revision right now. So you can't even, if you assume even a year, maybe two years to even get any of that phasing. But the first phase isn't even for people with children, it's age-restricted housing for the first 160 homes. So what are we doing here? Why are we in this big rush to move children around when they've been moved, especially for ours in enclave, three times already in the first five years of that existence? Let's hold people accountable, like our county. Schools should be built before you make more houses, and we should let children thrive in the places where they've been planted. Just this week, Two Rivers put out that they're building quilts for the school to build the roots of the initial school. Don't take that away from my daughter, and don't take that away from my son. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Strong.
Good evening to this board. Thank you for listening on a long Monday night. I'm going to roll through these points. I am pro-keeping Nantucket kids in the Crofton Cluster. I'm Nicole Strong. I'm a fifth-grade mom. We live in Gambrels near the Crofton schools. When people ask where we live, you know, Gambrels is on our mail, but we're Crofton. Route 3 is a leviathan with all the developments in traffic, the idea of sending our kids across it every day. It might as well be the interstate, it's pretty daunting, and we'd just be adding to the clog. Arundel Middle is at near-capacity, and it's maddening to think my son would be right back in a redistricting conundrum in a few years. It feels like avoidable strife, so let's not enspear ourselves the do-over. We are embedded in our Nantucket community. What's been proposed rips that apart on iffy data. It isn't just moving kids out, it feels like it's sort of striping them elsewhere and upending a crucial sense of identity and belonging. My son is on the spectrum, he has needs like a lot of kids in our community. Socializing is his Mount Everest, as I call it. I'm watching him and other kids just emerge from their shells, and it's through the Crofton bonds that they've built. I can't even think about what it would mean if they had to lose all of that connective equity and start over. Wrapping up, it's a hard time to be alive. The state of the country and the world, I don't know anyone who's totally fine right now. When it's overwhelming, a coping mechanism that experts name is to look locally and ground yourself in community and the impact that you can make there. So that is what 101 of us are doing tonight. Amid all that feels upside down right now, I would just ask that we really look at what this would do, what it actually would not do, and make the right call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Hines.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Amy Hines. I'm a parent of two Hillsmere students. Tonight, I add my voice to those in opposition of amendments BR1, 2, and 3 proposed by Dr. Tobin. My concerns will echo testimonies that came before me and those that will follow me tonight. The redistricting of Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere does not meet the basic goals set by the board. Most notably, none of the schools are outside the optimum utilization level. The number of students being shifted around seems minimal, but only addresses current AACPS-enrolled students. The actual number, especially to Hillsmere, will be much greater, but data outlining potential impacts of the new catchment has not been shared or considered. The community with over 1,000 homes will have a greater impact on the number of new students to Hillsmere, and it will be more than 11. I believe the redrawn lines will have a negative impact, breaking up existing communities, and would quickly push Hillsmere to enrollment capacity. Building and maintaining a thriving school community is a continuous effort, not only by the faculty and staff, but from the support of parents, grandparents, and caregivers. The community that exists outside the school's walls is vital for the school's success. At last week's meeting, residents in agreement with the amendments spoke about the closest of their community and their wish to have a community school. The community is currently zoned for a single school. They have a community school. However, they have not chosen to rally together to support that school. If their close-knit supportive active community made the commitment to their current school, the efforts would be transformative, elevating the school and surrounding community, and would help to achieve the board's goal of building strong schools throughout Anarundel County. Building up schools should be the goal of redistricting. I ask the board to listen and act in accordance with the outcry of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Short.
All right, good evening. So my name is Spencer Short, and I'm here in behalf of my son, Damian. Unfortunately, he's already in bed, so he can't be here to stay up this late with us. He's enrolled in Two Rivers Elementary, and he'll be one of the students that's reassigned to Piney Orchard under the superintendent's plans, which we in the community in my neighborhood don't understand. It doesn't make any sense. The goal should be based on growth without burdening children, without burdening the parents, and helping support the communities of which those schools thrive on, and I think it absolutely fails on those notes. Subjectively, these draft shifts disproportionately the housing communities around our neighborhood, and you'd have to prove to me that this isn't favoritism for every other surrounding community. This is selectively serving the newly-built homes in the Two Rivers area, some of which aren't even occupied, some of which aren't even built yet, and yet we're being forced to move in order to cater to them. That would be favoritism. My friend Brennan over there, who lives just a few houses down, already said it, three schools by the age of grade two is absolutely unacceptable, and I'm not going to put up with that. I want my son to be able to have this stability, and I'm sure every other parent in here would also want the same exact things. A lot of the teachers on the last redistricting from Piney to Two Rivers, they came with them. So at least then they had some semblance of stability, some semblance of being able to grow a community together. This isn't the case. This is a slew of changes to my neighborhood that, yes, I get it, works zip-coded for Gambrels or smashed in between Odenton and Crofton, but we don't belong to any of those. In this one, you're going off the whims of data that doesn't even make any sense, that's incorrect, and you're going on a fear-based thing in which there's no urgency. You're taking completely advantage of all of us that we wouldn't be here to show up, that we wouldn't be here to say no to this, while ignoring that if I were to take my son to school, I would pass by five other elementary schools that are within a quarter-mile distance of when we would drive by them. You picked the farthest school from us, you're going to make a six-year-old wake up at 7:00 in the morning, and I'm sorry, but we just can't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Jen Andor, Adrian Andor, Dave Barnes, Amy Lehe, and Joel Curse. Our first speakers, Jen Andor.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Nantucket children and families tonight. My name is Jen Andor, and I'm a mother of four, an 11th grader at Crofton High, a fourth and first grader at Nantucket, and a three-year-old future starfish. This year alone, my family has already faced three moments: Crofton Coral Connection, Open School Night, and Cardinal's First Flight, where our children were reminded they may not belong, and this year isn't even over yet. How many more reminders will there be? And that's not just our family, the exposure of families and children being reminded they don't belong is exponential. Crofton Connect celebrations are meant to build community, but how can we consciously do so, knowing they exclude a portion of the very students they're meant to unite? What is AACPS's plan to prevent this from continuing? And how will teachers be prepared to navigate such a sensitive issue without deepening the divide? Programs meant to unite with amazing intent will actually do the opposite of what they were designed to do: connect. Based on the three scenarios we've already experienced this year, my three youngest children alone could face nearly 300 reminders over their school years that they're not part of the same Crofton feeder as the peers in their community. Every concert or performance, game or event becomes another signal of separation, not by geography, but by design. AACPS's pillars speaking to belonging, stability, and well-being, yet... AACPS's pillars speaking to belonging, stability, and well-being, yet split articulation undermines all three. And the split articulation in Nantucket targets a very small group of students. There are two other schools in the county where split articulation occurs, but they are different. They happen as students move from middle to high school, not at the elementary level. And the students who are split to a different high school include all the students from one elementary school. Nowhere else in this county do you split articulate a tiny portion of students from one elementary school. Teachers cannot foster inclusion when children are reminded that they aren't truly part of the same community. Thank you.
Andor, thank you. Adrian Andor.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Adrian Andor. My wife Jen just spoke about inclusion in the community. Our children stand to lose. I want to speak to another AACPS pillar, student safety and well-being. If this redistricting begins next fall, our family alone will make over eight thousand crossings over Route Three before our youngest finishes high school. A hundred eighty school days a year, twice a day from grade six through seven for three children. That's over eight thousand trips I do not want them to take. And ones that should never happen because Route Three should serve as natural barrier when it comes to school zoning. Even just one child exposed to this is a dangerous risk that is unacceptable. Route Three has been designated by the state as a highway. It is a high-speed, high-volume roadway, one of the most dangerous in Maryland, and it's already entering a five-year construction phase, likely with delays, right? None of this has been accounted for in the redistricting plan. Two years ago, by the 7/11 on Rydell and Three, we were stopped at a red light, and of course, somebody ran it, smashed the minivan next to us and then the car. Thankfully, we weren't harmed, but we experienced the firsthand danger. My wife feared we would be hit next, knowing our toddler son was on the side of the impact, and she was distraught. She started bawling and crying. She was also worried about the children possibly, or people in the cars that got smashed by that reckless driver running the red light. Crossing Route Three is not impossible. I've done it myself, but it is extremely dangerous. What is impossible is to walk or bike to Arundel on a safe path that doesn't involve crossing a highway. I can't, I cannot imagine my daughters or son making that crossing safely, let alone anyone else's child. This is something children can do now. They can take, they can walk to school if they need to, or our neighbors can take them, but it would be fully taken away as an option if they are forced to go to Arundel. AACPS's first pillar is clear: student safety and well-being come first. Please uphold that promise. Keep them safe, keep them together, and don't force them to cross a dangerous highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes. Dave Barnes.
Good evening. My name is David Barnes. I'm a parent of two children at Hillsmere Elementary. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendments in Board Recommendation 1, 2, and 3 regarding the redistricting lines for Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere Elementary Schools. I do this because the board is planning to vote without final enrollment numbers. Additionally, the amendments do not clearly convey what problem the board is attempting to address by redistricting students from Georgetown East, which is currently underutilized at fifty-nine percent, to Hillsmere, which is currently well-utilized at seventy-nine percent. Shifting students out of Georgetown East does nothing to achieve the board's goal of redistributing utilization. Finally, projecting an increase of just eleven students at Hillsmere underestimates, or even worse, misrepresents the impact on enrollment at Hillsmere. The neighborhoods currently aligned to Georgetown East could help the board achieve the stated goals by remaining aligned to and attending Georgetown East, not by shifting to Hillsmere. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Amy Leahy.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Amy Leahy and a parent of three children who were educated in Anarundel County Public Schools and someone who takes education seriously. As well as being a parent, I am the wife of former Anarundel County School Board member Mike Leahy. And as I have said, we always valued our community education focus and shared commitment to providing our children with the skills and curiosity to become lifetime learners. Today, I would like to share my thoughts about Dr. Tobin's proposals to amend redistricting actions impacting the Annapolis Cluster. Years ago, my eldest attended Georgetown East when it was a Title I school. She received a good education, and the teachers were excellent. I believe her experience learning in a diverse community school was positive. Anarundel County Public Schools has always had commitments to its students to provide them with an education that will serve them and our community well. And I firmly believe that there is no place in that commitment or our school's operation for incorporating the slanderous idea that we should be moving students based on the assumption that other families may move their children from private school to the public schools if only they could attend one that doesn't have a Title I in its profile. What happens when these same students move on to Annapolis Middle School, which is under, also under-enrolled? Will the students from Bay Ridge then attend Annapolis Middle or Bates Middle, as the current Hillsmere students already attend Bates? It is one thing to seek efficiency, to use limited resources to provide value to taxpayers and their children, which was the stated purpose of redistricting. It was not to move students from a diverse-population school to one that puts them with kids who look more like them. I assume the board will agree that this goes against its policy of diversity and equality of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Curse.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the board. My name is Joel Curse, and my wife and I and our two sons live in Edgewater in the Gingerfield Community. I am here tonight to advocate for the superintendent's recommendation number three. Since this is the only recommendation based off of the most recent and presumably most accurate data, it begs the question of why any outdated recommendations based off of old data and presumably less accurate data could still be on the table? If, if an item is gonna be chosen, then it needs to be evaluated based off of the newest data we have. If I told a family to go to the beach this weekend because the forecast said it was seventy-five and sunny, but I then learned that it would actually be fifty degrees and raining, it would be foolish for me to stick with my original recommendation. Likewise, it makes no sense for this board to rely on old data when new, better information is available. Many amendments tied to SR3 may be fair in principle, but these were created under old data, and that data and those amendments has been hastily carried over through a process that no one quite understands. Many of these amendments are valid, but they must be reevaluated against the updated information and the best information that we have at hand. I would also like to advocate for the removal of the amendment to rezone the Gingerfield, Poplar, and Will Eleanor communities into the Annapolis Cluster. It is shocking that a member of the school board would propose a solution designed to exclude certain people from certain schools in the county. But Ms. Pulliam and hopefully others have realized that an approach like this is not acceptable. She realized this when she attempted to remove the amendment from the recommendations. We commend that effort and thank her for the change in the approach. We understand the system needs to be balanced, but it does need to be balanced in a manner based off of the county's own best data and what makes sense for families within the system.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next five speakers are David Voorhees, Kristin Caminiti, Amanda Mitchell, Timmy Walsh, and Scott Nichols. Speaking first, David Voorhees. David Voorhees. Okay. Ms. Caminiti.
Mr. Silkworth, you have begun and ended nearly every meeting involving redistricting by stating, "Redistricting means that some students will be going to different schools." At the last public meeting, you even added, "That's a fact." I would like to clarify, that is not a fact. AACPS's own press release from September twelfth stated, "The board can vote to move one or both of these plans forward, create one or more of its own to move forward, or vote to move no plans forward." Let me be, let me repeat. You can vote to move no plan forward. This means not one single student would have to change schools. Your statement repeated at every redistricting meeting, even when new data has been provided and new questions were raised, is a dangerous statement, assuming a foregone conclusion is unethical. Assuming that students must move despite continued questions from the public about the process and new data showing changing enrollment patterns implies that you care more about moving kids because you said you would than about actually doing what is best for our children. And I am begging you to care about these kids. Phase one of this process involved establishing boundaries for two brand-new schools. You had to conduct that process and move children, and move children into those schools. Your statement was true in phase one. It is not true in phase two. The public has repeatedly shown that you, that we have no confidence in this process. Given the public's lack of confidence in the crisis facing so many families during this time, the government shutdown, fear of ICE raids, lack of SNAP benefits, general feel about the state of our nation, there are countless reasons why this board could justify not adding more uncertainty to the lives of children and families. Choosing to adopt no plan at all would be more than reasonable. At the very minimum, I am begging you to adopt Ms. McDermott's amendment that would prevent unnecessary harm to a small group of students. Nantucket students do not have to move.
Amanda Mitchell.
Hello. My name is Amanda Mitchell, and my daughter is an Apex Theater Performance freshman. I am also the director at Central Middle School for their drama club. We're doing Beauty and the Beast Junior in April. Please come. Annapolis High is five miles away from Studio Thirty-Nine. Severn Run is seventeen point one. The drive time to Studio Thirty-Nine from Severn Run is a half an hour without traffic. Just do a simple Google search, and you will see that it is consistently at a half an hour. This will impact juniors and seniors, resulting at a minimum of an hour of lost instructional time each time they go during the day to studio. Freshmen and sophomores will have a half-hour minimum bus ride for Apex Plus classes, when the Apex Broadneck students will arrive significantly sooner due to being only seven point five miles away. Will these classes wait for Apex students to arrive before starting either at their high school or at the studio? Or will Apex students simply have to adjust to repeatedly losing instructional time? Will this impact the number of hours they accumulate for actually completing their magnet program or for their high school graduation? Has this school done a, an educational impact study to calculate the amount of instructional time that will be lost by these students? At the board meeting in October, we found out that Severn Run is already close at capacity, and they said themselves, "This really isn't viable anymore. It needs to get taken off the table." A brand-new state-of-the-art theater does not matter to Apex students who don't utilize it for their classes, and they don't use it for after-school activities. They don't do a single Apex performance at the high school. They do it at Studio Thirty-Nine. Annapolis is not simply where an Apex is housed. It's where Apex is home.
Thank you. Timmy Walsh.
Hi. I'm Timmy Walsh. I'm ten years old, and I'm in fifth grade at Nantucket Elementary. I have three older brothers who went to Nantucket. Henry graduated from Crofton High School in twenty-twenty-four. Maddie is a senior at Crofton High now. Sully is in eighth grade at Crofton Middle. I want to keep going to school with my friends like my brother did. I live in Briarly. My neighborhood is in a special situation. We are the last neighborhood off Nantucket Drive that will stay in Crofton High School and Crofton Middle School. Many of my friends and classmates live in Wilson's Grove, Crofton Valley, and Crofton Farms. These are neighborhoods next to us that will be going to Arundel Middle School and to Arundel High School. My friends and I use a pathway between Briarly and Wilson's Grove to visit each other. We spend a lot of time together outside and visiting each other's houses. My mom and dad both grew up in the military. They moved around a lot and went to a bunch of schools. They moved to Crofton when they got married so that my brothers and I could live in a community where we could have the same friends and classmates throughout our childhood. My two oldest brothers got to have this. Makes me very sad that my eighth-grade brother-in-law might lose touch with many of our friends that we've always gone to school with. My brothers and I are lucky that we have to go, that we have a lot of the same teachers at Nantucket, Crofton Middle, and Crofton High. I hope my friends can have the same thing. I have gone to Nantucket for six years. It's upsetting to think about not being in class anymore with some of my friends and not seeing them in the lunchroom every day. I talked with my Briarly friends. They're as sad as I am about getting split up from our friends in the neighborhood next to us. We really hope you can come up with a plan to keep us all together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Nichols.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here as a concerned parent of three current Central Elementary students in fifth, third, and kindergarten, who would be unnecessarily affected by all the proposed redistricting recommendations. I urge you to not support any proposal that moves the thirty-seven students from Central Elementary to Edgewater Elementary. As I was writing my comments for tonight and discussing it with my wife last night, my thriving kindergartner burst into tears asking why she would have to change schools. Based on all the available data, I cannot give her a reasonable answer why she'd be forced to leave our established school community. The board's recommendation moves thirty-seven students from South River Colony, nearly all townhomes, assigned to Central to Edgewater Elementary, where twenty-seven students are moved to Central to alleviate overcrowding at other schools. This results in a ninety-three percent utilization rate for Central. If the thirty-seven students were to remain at Central, the utilization rate would be ninety-seven percent. Central would remain within the target zone that you set and would be the same utilization range as several other elementary schools that are unaffected by the redistricting recommendation. Projected enrollment numbers for 2033 show growth by only eight students for Central. Even when factoring in this growth, keeping the thirty-seven students in place and bringing in additional students, Central would remain in the target utilization range. There is no justification for the reassignment of any students from Central. I urge you to reject any plan that moves these thirty-seven students from Central to Edgewater Elementary School. The data clearly shows that no student needs to be disrupted in this region. Thank you for your support and service to the community.
Thank you. Our next five speakers will be Carlisa Finney, Tyrell Forrester, Brooke Senchik, Robin Cohen, and Fay Belt.
Good evening. I am Carlisa Finney, education and family support advocate and former Anarundel County Public Schools Board Member and Equity Executive Director. I truly appreciate your commitment and challenges, and thank you. I request you not support the superintendent's recommendation to move high school students in the Walter Mills Parole Elementary School attendance area from, from Annapolis High School to South River High School. To move these students from their neighborhood high school seems like pure sabotage for the board to even consider as an option. For the very students, the school administrators, and community who over years have met with significant success to promote school attendance and academic achievement, student parental and community engagement. This move will certainly isolate those students from their elementary school and middle school peers to attend a high school, no matter how great their scores may be, and dissipate, no destroy their sense of community. In addition to the undue personal expense to a student who might miss the school bus for any reason, this move would make it extremely difficult to become involved in extracurriculars like sports and before-and-after-school programs and activities. It would be an unfair advantage, disadvantage to a parent who may need to reach their child in an emergency or attend a school meeting. This move would surely contribute to unnecessary anxiety and feelings of loneliness can, that can easily result in absenteeism, falling behind academically, disengagement that can lead to dropping out, and the loss of connections during the transition out of adolescence into adulthood, when community is so important. I also implore you to leave the children from the Robin Hood, from Robinwood Community in Hillsmere Elementary School, their home school, for years, and not move them to Georgetown East, and consider closing or repurposing that old school for a much-needed early childhood pre-K, pre-K, three and four, and professional development center in the Annapolis area. Thank you to all from the community who also say no to this redistricting decision, recommendation.
Thank you. Tyrell Forrester.
How you doing? My name is Tyrell Forrester. Um, I attended Annapolis High School in the nineteen nineties. Uh, during these years, friends, family, relatives, and neighbor, neighbors were bused from Byward to South River High School. This policy was discontinued. I don't know why. Is there a record of why? And at some point later, Annapolis High School is the only high school with community ambassador positions. Why would these positions be established at, will these positions be established at South River High School when Byward and High School students in these other under-resourced communities are once again bused there? Um, that was the way of establishing community ambassador. That was the way of establishing community ambassador positions is so important. These roles could bridge family, schools, resources, ensure that each child's voice is heard and no student feels left behind. Imagine ambassadors who help connect parents to programs, mentor students, and make sure the community's heartbeat is felt within the school walls. So as we prepare for this new chapter at South River, let's continue to create these spaces, to build the systems to reflect the diversity and strength of all children. Because when we pour into the whole child, we are not just shaping students, we're shaping leaders, citizens, and a stronger community for generations to come. When we talk about advocating for children, we talk about more than just grades of test scores. We're talking about pouring into the whole child, the meaning nurturing their minds, their hearts, and their sense of purpose. It means recognizing that every student, whether they come from Byward or South River and other communities, deserve equal access to opportunities, encouragement, and care. As parents, we are the first advocates, but our work doesn't stop at home. It expands into our schools, neighborhoods, when our students from under-resourced communities are bused to South River High School will ensure that they are not just present and supported and celebrated.
Thank you so much. Brooke.
Hello, I'm Brooke. I'm a proud Hillsmere parent of two children and an active school volunteer. I come this evening to request that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendments in VR 1, 2, and 3 regarding the redistricting lines of Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere Elementary Schools. I do this because after many phone calls and several unanswered emails, I still do not have the information that everyone should need and have in order to support this amendment. Information such as how many established homes are in the new boundaries? What is the total utilization of these elementary schools for all eligible students? How will the board address the inevitable influx of new students to Hillsmere that do not currently attend their public school? These questions have gone unanswered, and I believe that it is because, one, the answers do not necessarily support any of the board's stated goals for redistricting, or, two, there is an ulterior motive behind this amendment. I do not come to my opposition lightly. I have many dear friends in the three communities that would welcome these changes. However, it would go against my conscience and common sense to support an amendment that is so clearly out of alignment to the redistricting goals, against the school's current family's wishes, and will so clearly act to further segregate these communities. Dr. Tobin, you told me that if enough of your constituents oppose this amendment, you would withdraw it. You also voted against withdrawing amendments until after this hearing, stating that the community must have the opportunity to speak. We have spoken, many of us. Please withdraw these amendments. Thank you.
Robin.
Good evening. My name is Robin Cohen, and I'm here to advocate for Ms. McDermott's amendment to keep Crofton together. Nantucket is and always has been an essential part of the Crofton community. The families in the Nantucket area currently facing redistricting make up roughly 75% of both the Crofton Middle PTA and Crofton High School PTSO leadership. We serve on the boards of Athletic Boosters, coach for the Crofton Athletic Council, and lead scout troops that include students from every Crofton school. To remove our families from the Crofton cluster is to remove us from the same community we help sustain. And this isn't a one-time change. Split articulation would separate children from their peers and community, starting in sixth grade and repeating year after year. While I recognize that redistricting is an essential process, I question why Nantucket is once again being considered for changes, why a small group of students must bear the burden of being separated from their peers, and why every future Nantucket class will have to endure this same disruption year after year. To ask such a sacrifice of our students, there should be an extraordinary benefit. Yet, there is no meaningful goal accomplished by inflicting this kind of disruption. You would be moving rising sixth graders from Crofton Middle, a school currently at 101% capacity, to Arundel Middle, which with this change would also reach 101% capacity. How does this benefit our students? This plan doesn't solve a problem. It simply moves it at the expense of our children's stability and sense of belonging and to the detriment of the rest of the Crofton community. I respectfully ask that you consider the significant academic, emotional, and logistical impact this decision will have on our Crofton community. I urge you to do the right thing. Support Ms. McDermott's amendment and keep Crofton whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Belt.
Grand rising, everyone. My name is Fay Belt. I am a community activist for South County and North County. I listened to so many parents' concerns tonight in their ballot. I ditto with Carlesse Finney and I ditto with Mr. Tyrone. When you don't know your history, you're doomed to repeat it. Busing has been occurring for years. And as we go forth, I listened and I wrote down and came up with some solutions. As far as busing is concerned, I feel that we need counselors and behavior specialists who look like them, partially shared their life experiences. We need supportive services. We need parental support and culturally, and we need parental support with culturally prevalent communications. And as we go forth, and as I listen, let's go for the betterment of our students and our parents, because I hear a lot of fear. And what I'm hearing as well as the board and the community is not getting back to give the parents some solutions to answer so they can feel safe to move their children, because this is going to happen. I can see that. And as we know, busing has been happening for years. So let's do the right thing for the parents, for their children, for they could feel safe as they move forth with their children, redistricting, and also teach them as well and help them to adjust to the change that's coming forth. Thank you very much and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Kelsey Kennedy, Samantha Weaver, Carrie Alshire, Craig Carlson, and Christopher Scott. Speaking first will be Kelsey Kennedy. Kelsey Kennedy. Okay. Samantha Weaver.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Weaver. I'm the PTSO President of Crofton High School, and I'm here to advocate for Ms. McDermott's Plan Amendment to Keep Nantucket from Split Articulation. My family has lived in the Nantucket area of Crofton for nearly 40 years, and during that time, Nantucket students have repeatedly been the scapegoats used by AACPS to balance your enrollment spreadsheets. We all know in the 2000s that Crofton Middle was split articulated at the ninth grade. It destroyed our community. It ruined our spirit. But before that, in the 80s and 90s, the Nantucket area of Crofton was split articulated at the fifth grade. We would send a handful of students every year from Four Seasons Elementary School to Crofton Junior or Middle School, and I was one of those. I was forgotten. I was lonely, and my academics suffered because of it. And now we are imploring that horrible decision on a new generation of Nantucket students. And for the record, Crofton High School juniors and seniors living in the Nantucket area, this is the third redistricting they've had to endure while in school with AACPS. The Nantucket community is exhausted and we're angry because we know if the superintendent plan is enacted, we will be back here in a few years, redistricting again. And we know that because your actual enrollment data, the real numbers, not the mysterious projections that we keep talking about, say Crofton is going down, Arundel is going up, which means in just a couple of years, we'll be back here again to do this all again. Please save our students from this pain and do not inflict the split articulation of Nantucket Elementary. Thank you.
Carrie.
Me, Carrie?
Carrie.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Alshire. I'm a 20-year resident of Crofton, specifically in the Nantucket community. I'm a mom of two girls, a junior at Crofton High and an eighth grader at Crofton Middle. We live in one of the five neighborhoods that would be impacted. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to support Ms. McDermott's amendment to not split articulate Nantucket. Please keep Nantucket students and families together in Crofton Middle and Crofton High. We are a part of the Crofton community and we belong at Crofton Middle and Crofton High. My two biggest concerns, as everyone stated, is safety and belonging. Safety, sending five Crofton neighborhoods by bus or car on dangerous Route 3 twice a day during rush hour makes no sense, adding miles and time and risk to their drive. Route 3 is a hazardous, accident-prone, congested barrier and boundary that is the obvious defining line of the Crofton community. Route 3 was recognized as such in the last redistricting and should be this time too. There is no way anyone from these neighborhoods could bike or walk to school, leaving no safe backup plan should they miss the bus or the bus not show up. Belonging, feeling at home, valued and accepted, is equally as important as safety. These kids in these neighborhoods are Crofton kids. Sending them to another school doesn't change who they are. They are and will be the Crofton kids. These kids have six to nine years of friend, parent, teacher, coach connections that will be gone if they are split, more like amputated, and forced to start over. They will go from belonging to a community where they know 75% of a school to knowing maybe 5%. If they don't belong, how can they grow and succeed? This is scary, devastating, and heartbreaking. These are souls, and they're more important than numbers.
Thank you. Craig Carlson. Craig Carlson. Okay. Christopher Scott.
Good evening. I'm Chris Scott. I'm the father of three kids that attend Eastport Elementary, and I'm here to oppose the amendment to move the boundaries in Eastport, Georgetown, Eastern Hillsmere Elementary School. I'm number 94 speaker tonight, so if my kids are watching, go to bed. There aren't really any new metrics for me to argue or logic to oppose. Just want to give quickly, you know, my family's experience living in Eastport. We moved there before we had kids. We always kind of liked Annapolis, not from this area, but really drawn to it. And we looked through a bunch of houses, looking at houses, different neighborhoods in Annapolis, and finally our realtor said, try Eastport, the people there are a little different. And I was offended, right? But we really liked it, you know, we really liked it, and we bought a house, and we really liked a lot about the community walkable and how close and diverse it was. But after a 20-second Google search of the schools, you know, I did not have any kids at the time, I said, but what about the schools? You know, we did what any young couple did. We said, we'll figure that out later. Later came pretty quick. We had five kids and three kids in five years, and later became today before we knew it. And at first I thought, well, maybe I'll spend $100,000 a year to spend my kids to private school. And after reconsidering that, I said, well, maybe I'll learn a little bit about Eastport Elementary. And, you know, it wasn't long before their PTA was knocking on our door, taking us out to coffee, telling us these incredible stories. And what I found is that, you know, this is a real example of a grassroots community building up a school in its community. We really couldn't be more pleased about what we've seen. I guess, you know, the idea that the board can rezone part of our community and have everything else stay the same is really false. You know, we, Eastport communities belong in Eastport schools. Thank you.
So our next five speakers are Shanika Henson, Daniel Kenny, Fiona James, Brandon James, and Chris Parkinson. Speaking first will be Ms. Henson.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly, and thank you also for the private audience that I've been able to have with many of the members here on this board. I am here as a resident of the city of Annapolis, but also here in the official capacity too as Senator for District 30. I only use the title as Senator because I believe that the decision that you all are about to make will have generational implications. And I believe that at some point, people will want to look back through the record and figure out where were our public officials when it came to making this decision? I know that as a legislator, I often have that thought process for myself when I think about how did we get here? How do problems get compounded over the years? When were the breakpoints in the opportunities to intervene? And what did the people representing me do with those moments at that time? You have a really important decision to make when it comes to the high schools here. You have two high schools that are in District 30 that will be affected by the decision you make, Annapolis High School and South River High School. I believe that with the new data, there are 66 less students at Annapolis High School, and perhaps that's driving the decision to think that maybe now is not the time to take action, to take the pressure off of Annapolis High School. But I would encourage you to rethink that if that's what the thinking is, that because there are 66 fewer students, that we're not sure what the status of those students are, that maybe now is not the time to rethink Annapolis High School. But I'll tell you that the decision that you make will have lasting implications, and there is nothing that you've heard today that is worse than being trapped in generational poverty. You have the opportunity to impact that. You have the opportunity to create and be a lifeline for those generation of learners. Not only that, it was recommended by all three of the recommendations from your consultant. You also have a recommendation from the superintendent that would give you that opportunity as well. As you look at your decision, I ask you not to just look at what's in front of you today, but look at the future and look at the future of students in those communities who need and want opportunities outside of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Kenny.
Good evening. My name is Dan Kenny, and I'm a proud father of a senior and freshman at Crofton High School. I'm here speaking about adopting Ms. McDermott's proposal to maintain the current Crofton feeder and oppose the split articulation of Nantucket Elementary. First, I want to mention a comment made during the October 15th board meeting. Dr. Heiser acknowledged that the final enrollment data will not exist until December. Dr. Heiser also stated, quote, "We cannot have analysis paralysis. We can't stop the process." You can't even conduct analysis without the current data. This is not transparency. You want the school board to make an impactful decision on split articulation without the most recent data, especially since all of the Crofton Cluster kindergarten enrollment has decreased each year since 2021? If Crofton High School is supposedly overcrowded, why are there no portables? Why haven't I heard any discussion about adding portables? It's because it's a modern school that was beautifully designed to accommodate the enrollment. We've heard from countless parents, guardians, and students that they oppose split articulation on Nantucket. Dr. Bedell, you said you're listening to the community, but to be completely honest, based on your proposals, it does not feel like you heard us. We presented data analysis that shows the numbers are trending down and how the AACPS enrollment projections are incorrect. Split articulation should only be for extreme circumstances, like a school closing, a renovation, or some unforeseen circumstance, not for a situation like this, especially when the numbers are trending downward. Crofton has fought for decades for a high school, and just after five short years, the school board is seriously considering breaking up the community once again. I'm imploring you to listen to the community, listen to the students that they say the schools are not overcrowded, review the accurate enrollment projections, and adopt Ms. McDermott's proposal to keep the Crofton feeder intact and not split articulate Nantucket. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiona James.
Good evening. My name is Fiona James. I'm a 14-year-old and a freshman at Crofton High School. I'm here to speak about the proposed redistricting plan that would move students from Crofton High School to Arundel High School. Throughout my years in the Crofton Cluster, I have built many meaningful relationships through both school and sports. As a member of the Crofton High School soccer team, I was devastated to hear that I might have to leave Crofton and the team I care so deeply about. Being on this team is not just about playing soccer. It is about bonding, supporting one another, and creating lasting memories. From carving pumpkins together to weekly team dinners to spontaneous Panera runs, my teammates and I have built a community that is special and unique. In my soccer team of 20, three of us would have to be moved under this plan. The thought of leaving that behind and starting over is overwhelming. Crofton High School is not overcrowded. In most of my classes, there are only 23 to 25 students and even fewer in my Chinese class. Once many seniors leave for second and third period, the hallways in lunchrooms feel even more open and manageable. Another factor I hope you will consider is how Crofton's programs align with my interests. Crofton High School offers a signature program in safety and security in the digital age, which is the exact area I am passionate about. I'm eager to focus on digital citizenship and community-based activities surrounding this topic, building skills and experiences that are meaningful to me. this topic, building skills and experiences that are meaningful to me. Arundel High School has a different signature program, Community Development and Global Citizenship, which I am already exploring in other courses this year, and it does not align as closely with my goals. This change will not just affect us physically. It would affect us mentally and academically as well. Adjusting to a new school, making new friends, switching teams, and navigating new programs is a thought to ask of any student. Change can be very challenging, and for many, it can cause stress and anxiety.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you, Chris.
Brandon James.
Good evening. My name is Brandon James. I am the father of Fiona James, a freshman at Crofton High, and also the father of Brooke James, who is a fourth grader at Nantucket Elementary School. Definitely recognize you guys have a very difficult job, and for those who know me, I'm not very much a fan of politics, so this is a big deal for me to be here to speak. I want to implore that, you know, when my children both went through COVID, the community in which I lived in rallied together, and they are very important to me, and they are very important to my children. I implore everyone here on the board to take serious consideration about the mental impacts that this change is going to have effect on our kids. They've been through enough, from COVID to political uncertainty. These children are not immune, and they're very intelligent, and they recognize what is happening in the world around them. This decision has longstanding implications to every single one of these children. For me, I was fortunate that the high school that I attended, I didn't have to separate from my friends, and my lifelong friends ended up saving my life as I became older. I would like for my children to have that same opportunity. And with that being said, I'd like to implore the support of Mrs. McDermott's proposal and keep the Nantucket core in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Parkinson, and I'm the dad of two Eastport Elementary School students, and my family is directly affected by the proposed boundary changes. By removing my family and several others, you not only disrupt our children's stability, but you're also stripping away parent leaders, PTA members, and volunteers from a school that relies on a small but committed pool of families. I, along with two other dads, coach our baseball team. One of those dads, who would be redistricted also, coaches the soccer and basketball teams. By taking us away, you hurt a school like Eastport. These programs are important. Many of these kids wouldn't have the opportunity to participate in sports otherwise. The proposed change is also a safety issue. My children can currently walk through neighborhood backroads that are safe and familiar. This boundary change sends them out of our community and down Bay Ridge Avenue, where they would cross a busy main street. The boundary change also presents a diversity issue. According to the MSDE report card, there are nineteen white students enrolled at Eastport Elementary. This proposed change moves seven of those students out of the school. That's thirty-seven percent. So it makes Eastport and Georgetown East less diverse, while making Hillsmere more homogenized. Is this what we want for our schools? Is this the message that we want to send to our kids? After listening to all the speakers tonight and last week, it's clear where this community stands on the Annapolis Cluster boundaries. Actions speak louder than words, and the number of people coming here and speaking out against these changes far outweighs those in favor. Parents, educators, and neighbors from across Annapolis have spoken with one voice on this issue, and they are saying no. At the October fifteenth board meeting, Dr. Tobin spoke of keeping this process democratic. If that's truly the case, then it's painfully obvious that you should remove the boundary changes to the Annapolis Cluster in all proposals. Thank you.
Now, we have two more speakers, Siobhan Madison and Kimberly Nydig, before...and they should come on down. I would like to also make sure that the following individual, Damon Ostas, if you're here, come on down, Kyle Durbin, Brian Sparrow, Misty Heckinger, Jennifer Becker, David Voorhees, Kelsey Kennedy, and Craig Carlson. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Siobhan Madison, and I'm here on behalf of the Crofton community, my community. At a time when school systems are moving away from split articulation, it's hard to believe that we're considering adding another one in our county, especially when just five years ago, the opening of Crofton High put a stop to splitting our community. You've heard loud and clear from us about the damage reintroducing a split would do. You heard from the Nantucket fifth grader, who's been told since his first day of kindergarten that he's part of the Crofton community, and now must leave his friends to start at a middle school he's never been to, while the vast majority of his classmates and friends move on at Crofton Middle without him. You heard from Crofton Middle School eighth grader, who has also been told since her elementary school days that she's part of the Crofton community, who must now navigate selecting her freshman year classes at Arundel High, while the vast majority of her classmates and friends select Classes Four and move on to Crofton High without her. You heard from the Crofton High tenth grader, who's also been told since her elementary school days that she's part of the Crofton community, who now has limited chance at leadership positions in her sports and clubs at a new high school, while the vast majority of her classmates and friends have the opportunity to step up into these positions as they finish their time at Crofton High without her. Given these consequences, it's easy to understand why school systems are turning away from split articulation. Here, splitting a small portion of Nantucket students is a literal wrecking ball that is entirely out of proportion to any benefit that might result. Slightly reduces use at Crofton High, while simultaneously creating a very foreseeable overuse problem at the Arundel Cluster, an area experiencing enrollment growth. In our county, there is no split articulation of any elementary school. Please don't force our community to yet again endure one of the most aggressive redistricting tools for very little benefit.
Kimberly.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the board. Thank you for staying up late tonight to hear our voices. My name is Kimberly Nydig, a Davidsonville Elementary parent from the town of Reva and an active volunteer there. I'm here to speak about the redistricting proposal that moves our children from Davidsonville Elementary to Central Elementary. The families of our community have been deeply concerned ever since the superintendent's recommendations were released in July. We understand that during redistricting, boundaries sometimes need to change, but we have not been given clear answers as to why our neighborhood was chosen to be uprooted from our school community. When decisions this impactful to our children's lives are made without clarity or open communication, it erodes trust between families and the district. The board should rely on common sense redistricting methods, which assign students to schools that are geographically closer to where those students live. This facilitates cohesiveness within communities, giving students and parents a sense of belonging, that village that all families want. Not to mention contiguous borders can allow bus routes to be more logical and carpooling to become easier, helping to facilitate safer transportation of all of the students in the district. But with the current proposal, we achieve none of that, and we are being carved out of our community. Our kids love their school and their friends, and moving elementary school kids can have significant impacts on their emotional and social well-being. Families should choose their community, not school boards. With the added classroom and the unofficial enrollment data released for 2025, there is still room for our children to remain at Davidsonville Elementary. Not to mention, this would also prevent the domino effect of redistricting Central Elementary students to Edgewater in order to make room for us at Central Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Your name, please.
Brian Sparrow. Brian Sparrow. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Sparrow, and I have four children in the Eastport Elementary School District, and under the current proposal, three of them would be redistricted away from their friends, their school, and their walkable community. Many of the families in Eastport, including mine, don't rely on cars or even have access to reliable transportation, but we have something stronger, a community that comes together to support children. We raise money for supplies and clothing. We share coats, gloves, and rides. We step up to coach a team or help out with an after-school club. We store our excess in the belly of our neighbors. That's how this neighborhood works. Eastport is a little different. Every morning, my kids have an adventure getting to school. They see friends, pick up trash, wave to their neighbors, and pass by their mother's workplace right here in the community. They literally get free pizza from Vin 909 sometimes. It's awesome. That daily walk is more than a commute. It's a living classroom about independence, connection, and pride in where they live. Eastport is a little different. The families further down Forest Drive are part of the same city, and their neighborhoods were built for cars, and that's fine. They can show up for their schools in their way, just like we show up for ours. Eastport is just a little different. This plan doesn't just redraw lines, it literally splits up families. My neighbors and many others would no longer attend schools with their family members because in an urban community like ours, not everyone lives under the same roof. We are still one community. We share the same unique sidewalks, caring for the same teachers and kids, and building the same school and community together. I vehemently oppose any amendment that moves the Eastport Elementary boundary lines and severs the connections that makes our community whole, because Eastport isn't just a neighborhood on a map, it's a little different.
So, everyone, I believe that does conclude our public testimony this evening, personal and virtual. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who testified, everyone who advocated for your cooperation, your patience, and your caring advocacy. I'd like to thank Dr. Bedell, Dr. Heiser, and staff for everything that you've done for us. I'd like to thank as well all of my colleagues for being such great listeners this evening during this process and for caring so much. I also would like to make the following comment, and that is that no one cares more about students and about this school system, our schools, our communities, than I do. I think I've shown that over my forty-nine-year career as a teacher, and it is very true. I begin, I have begun many of our recent meetings with, "Redistricting means that some students will have to go to different schools." That really is the reality in which we are living today. I'm going to end the meeting by making that same comment, that it is true that some students... this is going to be a tough decision, but some students will be required to go to a different school, as happened in Phase One. Having said that, I would like to conclude, actually by saying thanks to all of your families and our families who are anxiously awaiting us at home and wondering why we are not there yet. So, thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening. Good night.